Good evening. We have called to order the planning commission. Regular meeting, which is kind of a special meeting because the regular meeting should have happened on the November 20th. It's during today, December 2nd, 2024. Uh, before I ask the clerk to call roll, I will just let everyone know who's fellow commissioners. That Anne, a broker had, she sent a letter of resignation today. You know, Anne has been fortunate. She got that new position where she's working, I believe it's in Washington DC. Which is what caused her not to be able to attend a couple of meetings, especially the ones that got changed. Not being able to get back. And then today she was going to try to make the meeting, but with weather, she had to fly to Washington DC early. So she really just kind of looked at her schedule and determined that she would love to come back if the opportunity. And we'd love to have her if we had an opening in the future, but for now she was going to need to resign. And so that does leave us now with once again, a new open a position. We also would like to welcome Austin. I don't know if you all had a chance to meet him here, but he is replacing. Joe, who moved up to be our council rep to replace Holly Anderson. So there's been a few changes here, but welcome Austin. And uh, the one thing that we will probably do for the December to give everybody a chance to kind of think about it would be. Uh, well, we'll need to nominate and elect a new vice chair since Anne was vice chair to be able to run meetings. And we may actually just do both, you know, chair and vice chair because it's been a while since we had the election. Make sure we're all on the same page for each of those. So with that as a kind of an opening, I will ask for the roll call.
Um, geez.
Uh.
I get to go first now.
A little rusty.
Patrick.
Here.
Mark.
Here.
God.
Here.
Lachey.
Not last.
I'm here.
I'm here now.
Here.
And man's.
Here. Would you have a forum? Everyone has the opportunity to see the agenda before them. Um, one thing that I would like to suggest. Is Luke and I were meeting today with David, who is online and we're kind of going over the agenda. There's some of the items that are in current agenda E. That depended upon how our decision goes regarding E, it could affect. What we do regarding the 515, which is A. So we thought it might be prudent to move E to A. And then it gives us some better guidance as to how we would want to handle the public hearing. I apologize to those people in the room because normally public hearings come first. But I don't want to spend time debating something that may need to be tabled. So.
Chair, I'm making a motion to move item E up to be replace A.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Be opposed? Seeing none. So it will go the accessory dwelling unit, which was buzz E will be A. And then everything else will move down one. So 515 will be item B, C, D, and E accordingly. In our packet that was sent to everyone, there was the minutes from our last meeting. Hopefully everybody had a chance to read them. Obviously, the new people, new ones like Austin would not be able. But did everybody have a chance to read and was there any comments on them? If none, we could be moved, have a motion to approve.
I move.
Support? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes. Unopposed, seeing none, the meetings, minutes for September 19th, 2024 have been approved. To move this down to the public comments. This could be public comments on anything that's on the agenda itself. If you would like to speak, you would come up to the microphone here, just give us your name, your address. And if you wouldn't mind, tell us which one of the agenda items that you would like to address. If you're online, please just raise your hand on your screen and we'll call upon you when we, when we finish in the room. Anyone in the room would like to come up for public comment?
Hi, Paul Whitfield, 450 Spear Street. Uh, it's been a while since I saw you. Paul Whitfield.
Thank you.
Um, and uh, talking about item E that is now item A. But uh, I saw the uh, proposed uh, changes and I thought they look good. Uh, there's a few options there and uh, I just wanted to say, you know, they look good and I, I support those. And, and I just encourage um, anything that would make it easier and, and proactive. To encourage um, residents that have a primary residence and an ADU. It's, it's really the perfect recipe for um, you know, what the town is looking for. Because you get neighbors and, and you get the people visiting as well. So anything we can do to, to actually encourage that, um, I would uh, encourage.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll get a chance when you're.
Anyone else?
Item A items, when you, yeah, yeah, you'll get a chance to talk about it later.
In the public hearing, we do have public comments for the each public hearing items, in case anyone was wondering. And then for anyone who isn't in the room, we do have at the end of the meeting, a second public comment, which can address anything that you'd like to bring before your planning commission. Is there any hands online? Oh, Chris. Chris, would you like, there you go.
I unmuted. Can you hear me?
We barely can, yes.
Yep. Hold on, I'm gonna turn you off.
Okay. Go ahead, Chris. I'm up as high as I can go here. So hopefully this will work. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good. Uh, I'm talking about uh, item six C, the first floor apartments in the PUD departures. And my, I have a couple of questions. First of all, thank you for doing this. I think it's really critical for our waterfront. If I'm looking at the synopsis on the, on page um, 58, where it says that this is an allow, there are allowable departures. I'm assuming that means exemptions. And then it says, after lengthy discussions, we removed the option to allow first floor front facing. Although the PUD process, if a developer is committed, providing access to the waterfront, they can stay. Is, is it possible to make this so that that um, uh, keeping the waterfront open would run with the land? So that we wouldn't have to change every time there's an ownership? Then um, the PUD actually could be based on the current language that is there. And if I'm looking at that, then um, this allows the pub on, I'm gonna jump around. I go to page 60, regulatory flexibility E. And it says, this allowed, my impression is this allows the PUD to go larger than current restrictions. Um, and I'm not sure why we would do that. Uh, I understand the orange setbacks to, to make them uh, be more. Obvious in what they're doing, but it would seem to me we should not be allowed to go larger. Uh, the current should be the maximum. Because if you do that, that would allow the first floor residents there would be able to have a 10 foot setback, a 10 foot um. Boardwalk and then go right from there with no minimum setback, right up two, two and a half stories or 37 feet. So I would just ask that this will impact the view shed, um, the, this, the departures that you're lying for the PUD. And I would like to see if we can definitely have numbers in there so that it's not that vague. And it gets pretty well locked down before anybody comes here with you before a uh, auction. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will go ahead and close. Public comment section. We didn't have, there was no old business, so that will move us to the new business. Which our first item underneath new business is accessory dwelling unit standards, discussion on requirements for special land use. Approval to allow accessory dwelling unit. That begins on.
50.
Yeah, 78. 78 in our. It's. So David wrote the. Email in regards to. The overview, I do, Luke, would you like to do the overview or would you like to have David just kind of like read through his?
Either way, it's fine. I, I can sort of introduce it a little. Um, and thank you, Paul, for attending. Uh, Paul, of course, uh, is the owner of 450 Spear Street, and that's what sort of kicked this off. So the reason for um, the accessory dwelling unit standards, the reason we're reviewing them tonight is because um. We have a lot of non-conforming accessory dwelling units. And uh, accessory dwelling units as part of the new short-term rental license. Um, uh. Uh, the, to gain a shorter, thank you, yeah, sorry. To gain a short-term rental license for an accessory dwelling unit, um, you need a special land use approval. Uh, and as part of that, you need to uh, meet certain standards. And one of them um, is that it are the um. Sorry. Uh. The issue is that. We have a lot of non-conforming accessory dwelling units that are unable to gain their special land use approvals because they don't meet the standards laid out to build new accessory dwelling units. Ie, these buildings were built 50 years ago and they don't conform to the current regulations to build an accessory dwelling unit. And then for, therefore, on are able to gain a short-term rental license. Um, so whether that be uh, they have utilities or they are too large. Um, or they are a first floor apartment in front of their house. If you have a non-conforming accessory dwelling unit, by our current regulations, you're unable to gain um, the special land use approval to rent the ADU. And um, 450 Spear Street was obviously the first one to come before us. Um, well, I've been here. Anyway, you guys have seen plenty, but that was the one that sort of kicked off the discussion. Um, of are our regulations too strict in regards to this? Um, at the next agenda item we have tonight is also a non-conforming accessory dwelling unit. And I already have another non-conforming accessory dwelling unit um, on our next meeting also. So what we're finding is that a lot of these places were built. Um, and they no longer meet our current code. And when they go to get their license, I, obviously they have to come for special land use approval anyway to get a um, license, but it gets here and we have to table it. Um, because we are unable to approve. Um, and so I'm sure you've seen in the packet, uh, we have some draft language that would address um, those issues.
Right. And for those, because I don't think Luke was here, if we kind of step back in time, we can kind of remember that when this first came in front of us. It was an issue, we were really debating on the square footage, a part of it. So that's, and at that time, we were trying to decide, you know, where we said the 375 was kind of like the minimum. We were discussing, could it be like 300? And then there was some, some thoughts that it could just be if it's in compliance with Michigan building code. So as we were looking at this ordinance is when we also realized that. You know, if we were making changes, just to make, change the square footage minimums. That it also gave us the opportunity to, when you see the red on page 80. Um, was to allow for accessory dwelling units shall be rented if they comply with all requirements. Or if they currently are non-conforming and one or more. But they were, and then right now, one of the things that says it's got two As and Bs. We can have to have a discussion that we were thinking, and David um, kind of concur with this earlier today. That it would really, if currently not conform with one or more requirements of 154 dot 022W. But was established lawfully, period. Um, which gives the flexibility not only for the one that came before us previously. But if we have ones that are coming up like 515 St. Joe, where they were built, they were, they met all the standards that were built lawfully. And now they have the ability where they're asking to be able to use the facility as a rental. That they don't have to go back and be subject to something that was different than how they got originally approved. That kind of makes sense. So that's why we're, we're looking at it. So we're trying to look at both the square footage and. Where you can make exceptions if it was originally built. Lawfully.
Just to add to that as well, um, if our regular short-term rentals were held to the same standard. Ie, if you have a non-conforming structure, you couldn't gain a license. I think we have a lot less rentals. Um, because again, the city was built, you know, a hundred years ago. And so most every parcel and structure has some kind of non-conformity, whether it be too close to a setback or, or over on lock coverage. It's pretty common. So any kind of accessory dwelling unit that was built prior to the last 10 years or 20 years. They're going to be non-conforming. Uh, just to add as well, these changes don't. Um, stop them from requiring a special land use. So they're still, they, they still need approval. They will still come before the board uh, to get approval from you before they're able to get a license.
David, is there anything that you'd like to add before we open it up for commissioner discussion?
Uh, I, I don't think I have anything else to add. It just, uh, again, there, there are two options in section one of the ordinance. Uh, which is on the top of page um, 79. And uh, that is, uh, as mentioned, uh, one option is just to have a um, a no minimum. Uh, for the square footage for accessory dwellings, as long as it satisfies uh, the state of Michigan building code. And this, this section is really for, for new accessory dwelling units. Um, or uh, the accessory dwelling unit shall have a minimum of 300 square feet of gross finished floor area. So uh, that was based on our discussion last time. Uh, there wasn't a. A final direction on that. So we included both options in that section one, paragraph three. And then as, as, as mentioned, uh, the second part of this would be the uh, allowance to consider. Non-conforming accessory dwelling units, uh, as long as they were lawfully established.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner thoughts?
Um, I'll start off. Um, the established lawfully language. Um, are we going to just assume that whenever a house was built? If they got a building permit, that necessarily means that that house was built lawfully at the time? Is that, I mean, is that the, is that the pass through that they get? Um, or does a petitioner have to somehow show? Um, that their house was built lawfully at the time? Um, and if they're not the builder of that house, um, you know, I, 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 you know, that seems like a. It just seems like a pass through, like, oh yeah, I, my house is there. I must have gotten a building permit to build my house. Um, so therefore. I can't guess, escape the phrase, ipso facto, it seems necessarily so that therefore it's lawful. So that just is, that's just saying every single person that comes before us who has a non-conforming ADU. Non-currently conforming ADU, by the very fact that it exists, it must have necessarily been established lawfully. I'm not sure what the answer is to that because I'm not trying to put undue burden on property owners. But um, I, you know, that's a thought I have.
And of course, what we're allowing would be if we did have it approved. And I do hear what you're saying because we talked, I think we've evolved, I thought of this. Uh, it would allow somebody to make the decision that they wanted to apply for a special land use, which would still mean that they may have come before and that, that at that time, the planning commission would have the ability to review. Their application, you know, for the special land use. And you could ask those type of questions, but without it being in there, it would be very challenging for them to even have the ability. To, to apply for a special one and use because currently they wouldn't meet the standards that allows them to apply for a special land use.
Well, for example, I'll, we'll take um. Um, not to pick on any particular property, but if the ADU has separate electric water utilities. I don't know when our statute was enacted that provided for that.
Right.
So was this built before or after? Is there a good reason why an ADU shouldn't have? Was that, was there a good reason why it was put in our statute that an ADU should have the same water, electricity utilities as the principal residence? Or was that just thrown in there for God only knows what reason? So I mean, you know, I mean, if we're, I mean, we, we, I can't, I've been on the commission for over a year. We've never not approved an ADU special use permit.
Right.
So is this just an easier way for people to come in and say, hey, I want this and, and we pass it through?
Well, this'll.
If it is, that's, let's just say it is.
No, it just would allow them, because like again, right now, the way it's currently written, like with the one that has two services. You know, technically that may, they're not compliant, so they wouldn't have the ability to apply as, as a special land use for us to bring it in front of us.
Because that's what our ordinance says. Simple as that.
Yeah. Like.
Don't the current tax for parcel records show whether it's an ADU by city standards? Whether it was legal when they built it or not, it has been recognized by the tax system as being a legal ADU by being on those, those property charts?
Uh, so. There may be some assessing data that says, yeah, that they have an accessory dwelling unit. Um, but what we're finding is that there's a lot of people who have been renting their accessory dwelling units. And up until we recently, you know, um, uh, introduced the new license for short-term rentals. They haven't needed to get a special land use approval to, to obtain the license. So in the case of the uh, accessory dwelling unit that has its own utilities. They've been renting for, I think, five or six years already. Um, and then they, they come to obtain a license and find they have to get a special land use approval. Okay, well, that's fine. Well, unfortunately, that's a process we need to now take to continue to rent. But then some small uh, utility, sure, that's quite a big thing. But um, I mean, meeting all the standards to build a brand new ADU. Again, I've got one coming before you where it's a first floor apartment, which is slightly in front of the house. And therefore, um, therefore doesn't meet the standards. So that, that wouldn't be able to gain the special land use approval either. So.
And those people knew when they built the ADU in front of the house, or should have known, or their architect should have known, or their builders should have known that that wasn't going to be compliant.
But we made a change. Again, we had to go back and find when it was built. And was it unlawful at the time?
I thought he said it was a new build. I'm sorry.
No, no, he was talking about another one that was built like 40, 50 years ago.
Ah, okay.
And then when the house got built, the house is slightly further back than what, it's not in front of us yet, but it's one that would be forthcoming. That would also kind of relate to why we're trying to get ahead of this.
We're also not changing any of the uh, requirements for building a new accessory dwelling unit. So any new accessory dwelling unit would automatically um, conform to the regulations that we're um, discussing.
I, I think what, what Mark's getting at though, which I kind of agree with is you, you don't want to put the burden on the petitioner to establish that it was lawfully established. So maybe somewhere in here, you can just put, there is a presumption that it was lawfully established. And then they don't have to necessarily prove that part of it since it's there. I don't, so I think that could get contentious like Mark's bringing up.
Yeah, because I mean, if they came before us with the special land use and you were looking at it as a, they wanted to rent it. You know, they would have to have the fire department, they would have to go out and investigate and do their um, study. So they would look at that. I mean, the fire department's not going to like verify that it was built with, within Michigan standards. But you would have, you know, that extra layer uh, that would be going forward.
Mr. Chairman, uh, just to simplify things, just based on this conversation, uh, and maybe Trent could also comment on this, uh, if he has any concerns with it. But um, we could just simplify this, just to say, uh, in that paragraph J, a rental accessory dwelling unit shall conform with the following requirements and just strike number one altogether. Um, and the language that was proposed to be struck 154 oh two two W. So if we're just, if we just said that you just have to meet the requirements. Of oh 92 J, we just, then I make it simple, we could just not refer to this conforming standard at all. Just so that our, our main issue is that we're, we're worried about the non-conforming situations with 154 oh two two W. And if we just strike that, uh, it's just assumed that you can rent. Well, we would allow for the rental of any dwelling unit, whether it's conforming or legally non-conforming. And then if, if there's something that's illegally non-conforming, as if it was not lawfully established. That's a code enforcement issue and we could deal with that outside of this uh, process altogether. So if we, if the city learned that there's an ADU that was built without a permit, we're obviously not going to let it go through a permitting process. For you to see as a special land use. So it's going to be something that the city is going to issue a ticket to and not allow for any sort of permitting. So uh, it, it would probably be simple just to strike this language, all, strike paragraph one and then keep. The uh, the struck language in paragraph J, and that might just solve our problem in a simple manner.
So David, you're talking about in J. The rental accessory dwelling unit. Would then read, a rental accessory dwelling unit shall conform to the following requirements. And then it would just be two would become one and three would become two?
Correct. Two would become one. So the first paragraph then would be a rented accessory dwelling unit. So, so yes. So in paragraph J, that, that language would say the same. With the strike, with the struck phrases and then paragraph one A B would be completely removed. And so that, that would really solve all the issues I think were, were presented tonight with concern with having to demonstrate compliance. Or, or legal conformity. Um, and then any sort of illegally constructed unit would just be dealt with by, by staff on its own.
Are we reinstating the struck language in the initial sentence of paragraph J also? Regarding all regulations in 154 oh 22, per N, W, and per N, or is that still struck? I'm.
We, we would, so in, in J, in that paragraph, the, the two-line paragraph J at the bottom of the page. Uh, we would keep that language, uh, well, we would, we would strike the language as shown. It just basically, that would stay as presented right now. So it would simply say, a rental accessory dwelling unit shall conform with the following requirements. And so right there, just removing all regulations in 154 oh two two W, that solves our problem with, about allowing. Uh, well, the conformity issue with, with all these other various requirements. So that would help the situations that have, uh, we've had two open applications with non-conforming issues.
Which would then allow, if I'm correct. Someone who would like to rent their ADU. On a short-term basis to apply for a special land use. And then we would have the ability to discuss any of the non-conforming parts during the special land use?
We wouldn't have to.
We wouldn't, correct, we wouldn't have to at all.
We wouldn't need to. Okay.
So if we do, as you suggested, David, um, a new ADU coming before us. Could have, for example, separate utilities because there's no requirement that they comply, that any ADU coming before us complies with 154 point 022W, right? Or am I missing something?
So if, if someone is building a new, I think Luke is about to say this. If someone is building a new ADU, they would still need to meet all the current requirements in 154 oh two two W. But the language here in, in paragraph J is going to be the conversion or, or the uh, the allowance. To rent long or short term in existing ADU. Not a newly constructed ADU, because the newly constructed ADUs will have to meet all of those other requirements concerning size, utilities and so on. Uh, if there are concerns with other ADU requirements, I, we could certainly address those it, um, as a part of a different ordinance though.
So in fact, it's just sort of grandfathering the existing ADUs to let that work through the market. All new ADUs will meet our current standards.
Correct. Correct. But that's, so that's assuming any ADU. That's in existence today. Gets a buy no matter what.
No, it still needs to come before you. It would still.
Understand.
Yeah.
But yeah, I, I think so. That means that there's a, I think it's a rebuttable presumption.
An ADU that was built. Outside of the codes 50 years ago. Doesn't meet the codes today, hasn't met the codes ever. It's a buy on this.
Yes. Well, yeah.
Yeah, that, that I'm struggling with a little bit.
And I'm struggling with why you put all that language in and now you're taking it all out. I mean, if it was unnecessary. Two days ago.
I think that these consequences weren't foreseen. You know, we, we have again, plenty of people renting their accessory dwelling units already. And I know what you're saying about, you know, so it doesn't have to meet the code to gain the special land use. But these buildings still have occupancy, so they're safe enough to long-term rent. They're safe enough to live in. Um, they're perfectly appropriate. They just, or not always, no, of course not, no, not always. But uh, in theory, they are, they are safe enough. They still have to have a inspection by the fire department. So the fire department is still going to go out and make sure that this is habitable. Um, what we're just saying is that to apply for the special land use, you don't need to meet the current standards. Which again, uh, most of the, most of the primary. Dwelling units in the city of Sault Ste. Don't meet the current standards.
I'm not putting this on anybody, but you know, I'm not a big fan of dog and pony shows and it strikes me that um. if we take it, take this back out and put it the way it was, and we either by legislative intent or otherwise say that every single A D U in this town is grandfathered in and short of being a fire hazard, which is in our purview, um, we're going to pass them through. And I say, why do we even have a special land use for A D Us that?
So, that is one of the things, I mean, that's our December nineteenth agenda to talk about for twenty twenty-five.
And you brought that up.
Oh, yeah, I'm off.
I mean, you know.
It's a money grab essentially.
Why make people pay the fee? Why make us waste our time if that's the direction that this city wants to go? And I'm not sure it is, but you know, I'm with this guy, you know, I, I think A D Us are, are, if we're going to have short-term rentals, I think A D Us are probably the best way to go. But, um, you know, so. And, and if it was so important to put this in, or so significant to put this in, and now we're just, oops, gonna take it out because it's a little confusing or would be hard to enforce.
I, I think it just didn't have the consideration for the amount of non-conforming structures that we have. And so, uh, you know, like I said, immediately you, you've got most of the town eliminated from being able to even apply for an accessory dwelling unit rental.
That have previously had S T R licenses and being.
That have previously had S T R licenses, because these are regulations that we only recently introduced.
Okay, I, I'll take that as a given. I have no idea whether, how many, what percentage of A D Us in this town comply with our current ordinances. Um, so all the ones that have come up the past year have, so.
And I'm guessing that most of the ones that were built since the last revision two are ordinances, you know, which would be the one fifty-four point two-two W. They did meet those requirements. But before those were put into place, there was things that were built that had been utilized either as their primary or as their rental on their properties. It, in effect, yes, we are kind of saying that they could be grandfathered for at least consideration of a special land use if we were going to continue to have a special land use requirement that they have to file to be able to get a license for a short-term rental. But because we don't currently have it on the agenda to discuss whether or not we want to remove the special land use requirement, and we have cases coming before us, this was something we could least recommend to council for a potential change that would allow us to move forward with some of the outstanding ones that will be coming not only in this packet, but in future meetings.
And just to add as well, this is just a discussion topic. We still need to publicly notice this and have this come back before you with, you know, revised draft language, if that's what you're looking to do.
And what we're hoping is.
They'd have to come to us. It can't go straight to city council.
It would have to come back to us.
So what we're hoping that tonight.
Sorry.
Right. So if we have an agreement tonight, David, would we have time to get it?
We can't get it on the December meeting now. We'd have to, uh, yeah, by, I just don't have enough time to get it publicly noticed. Yeah. So it'd be January nineteenth.
January's meeting.
Yeah. Now, we could have it as another discussion topic. If you guys want to talk about it further at the December meeting, we can definitely put that in there.
I hate to drag it out, but part of me wants to think, you know, just kind of backing away from the language here for a second, just kind of thinking through the spirit of what we're talking about. I mean, I can see two sides of it, right? I don't like the idea, complete with Mark here, I don't like the idea of just saying Wild West anything before, right, is, is, you know, and then, and then allowing, then having it come to us to decide whether or not we want to agree to the speed of whether or not.
Well, for one thing, it makes us the bad guys potentially every single time.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 you were going right where I was going. I, I don't, part of me is thinking, all right, if if the A D U was legally built at the time and met the codes from a specific time forward, I don't know, maybe that's dragging me a little bit forward. It's still not quite there yet, but it's one thing to say we're grandfathering everything, let it come before the zoning and we'll just figure out whether it makes sense or not, or let fire department shoot it down if it's not a safe structure. It's another to say, okay, you built an eighty, follow the law, you got all of the zoning requirements when you built it and the time you built it. That I can kind of understand a little bit.
I agree.
I want to, but is that even administratively?
Possible. And I guess it's, you know, if you are buying a home, you're purchasing and you, it's got an A D U on it, you're assuming that you have the ability to rent it if it's been previously rented. Right?
Or if it's just been built, right?
Well, if it's just been built, it would have already adhered to the standards. So we wouldn't have any of the issues of.
Well, not like just been built as in time, but by being built, it is meeting the standards. I think that's what I was at least going back and forth with Mark on is the burden on people having to, who buy an older home who may not have these documents or this, what the, the, the codes and ordinances were at that time. And now do they have to pitch that to us? Or can it just be, we are assuming that since it is there, it is a structure, it was built, it was legal when it was built? I don't think that necessarily means we have to totally delete that paragraph, though. Um, I just think you you just make it a presumption that we operate.
And, yeah, I have a question for, for Luke and, and David. So under subparagraph W of, uh, one fifty-four zero two-two, is it, are you, are you saying that a newly built A D U must comply with subsection W?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah, we're not changing anything about.
Okay.
Yeah. If you want to build a new A D U, you have to comply with that section. Yeah.
And if they don't, they don't get a bril- building permit?
Yeah, they wouldn't get a zoning permit. So if somebody wants to build an accessory dwelling unit and they come to me with an idea that doesn't meet that criteria, then they don't get my approval.
Okay.
The only way to then build it would go through the Z B A. You're not going to get that variance. But yeah, new.
I just wanted to nail that down.
Absolutely. Yeah.
How many A D Us are we talking?
I don't know.
We don't have a specific number, but we do know that we've got two or three cases.
We have three right now.
Are going to be coming before us.
All of which have been rented.
You know, the standards for currently, they were purchased, the, the buildings were there, they rented the buildings. But if they wanted to bring it before us to do short-term, which we are all encouraging, they wouldn't meet. So therefore it was like, you know, initially we were saying built lawfully, but if the commission thinks that they would rather just like David said, you know, make it to where it has to meet just the two and three, which would become one and two, then that allows us to let them move forward with an application for a special land use.
And by striking the phrase, all regulations in one fifty-four twenty-two W, if you strike that, then you also can strike subparagraph one because they cancel each other out.
Cancel each other out, exactly. Which is what David's kind of brought up that.
I understand. No, I'm just, yeah, I'm sorry, making it clear for me.
Same here. I, I missed that earlier when I was reading it myself.
So this is just discussion.
Building code and what's, what's the gap between the two?
Michigan building code is, is what is required to obtain a building permit. So it's not something that, you know, you need a building official. You know, I, so zoning permit can tell you where you can place a building. Building permit will tell you how to build it, you know, and they'll make sure it's safe. Okay, so. Yeah, they do still have minimum size requirements. So I mean, things like, you know, you can't have a, you can't have a six-foot ceiling by Michigan building code.
And it's.
They don't have the floor space, they don't have the square footage.
Isn't that on the overview? It says, building code is seventy square feet, rehabitable rooms be at least seventy square feet and kitchens be at least forty-nine square feet. So it's much, it's smaller.
But your question goes to the first part of this ordinance that we're talking about, changing. By just relying on the building code.
Or we could make the decision. We also, somebody said that they thought maybe three hundred.
Which is again arbitrary. Uh, I mean, you, it's arbitrary based on what? I believe other city ordinances, right? Other cities.
Other cities, exactly.
That's how the three hundred came to be.
Correct.
Which is based on, who knows what they came up with.
Exactly. You know, because I think there was some conversation when we're going back that somebody said, well, would it be safe if they only had a hundred and fifty square foot one, you know, kind of? And some, you know, some felt, well, if it's got one room and it's seventy feet or more, and it's got a kitchen of forty-nine and a bathroom, technically it meets the building code, but it just became a question of, was that too small? Did you want to allow something like that? And so that's where, uh, David put in, you know, we could arbitrarily, because let's face it, they arbitrarily set three seventy-five, you know, previously. Uh, you know, I, we couldn't find any documentation to where that, you know, came from. And so I think, you know, part of the discussion was, should we just, you know, go with either no minimum or, you know, having a minimum at least states that it's to be, has to be in compliance with the Michigan building code, which says it's seventy square feet for living space and forty-nine square feet for the kitchen at a minimum.
But that's what the building code says?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I.
Yeah, that's it. That's in David's overview. I'm sorry.
Do we even have the option to go less than the building code, I guess?
No.
No.
But then you wouldn't get a bill.
If you're going less than the building code, you might as well just strike any minimum whatsoever and just have the maximum, which that was also one of the things we discussed. So you really, we kind of have three different things. You can strike any minimum. You can arbitrarily set a new minimum. Um, and, or you can go with building code, but yes, like you're saying, Austin, if they are building one, they would have to meet the building code in the first place. And I'm not certain if we have any A D Us that have got less than a hundred, a hundred and twenty-nine square feet or a hundred and nineteen square feet, you know, in the city.
But if there are, at least on this point, I personally am think three hundred is arbitrary. And if, if this is going to be in here, might as well just keep it with what's in line with the building code. That's at least where I'm at now. I mean, if we can discuss that and, and work our way through this to get something accomplished with it, I'm at least in favor of keeping it with the building code.
I agree. It's twenty years from now, somebody will understand what we, where we've picked that from.
Exactly.
It might be some, an arbitrary number. And I'm for the striking of the language in paragraph one below.
What were the two subsets of one twenty-nine? You said forty-nine and something, forty-nine seventy?
Yes.
And?
If it's for a, a habitable room has to be at least seventy square feet and kitchens need to be at least forty-nine square feet.
In addition to the seventy.
Correct.
Obviously.
In addition, so, so based on that, if you just had one room and a kitchen, you could have a hundred and nineteen square feet technically. You still need a bathroom. You probably need a bedroom.
You don't need a kitchen technically either, right?
Yeah.
You don't need a kitchen. I mean, but it's a rental for microwave and fridge.
Well, I think our current A D U pol- uh, W says it has to have a, a cooking, I think there's some cooking requirements.
Is that just?
In W, to build a new one.
Like an actual gas. Okay, it's build a new one.
So again, this is just a discussion item, so, uh, we could.
Give David direction, do we kind of have a consensus? We'd rather just see it as the Michigan building code or no minimum?
Uh, building code.
Yes, building codes.
Yeah.
Building code, in my opinion.
So we would have David, the building code, so we'd strike that after the or. And then the red would be strike, stricken in the B. So then on the J, to give him some direction, because again, this, we're probably going to put this, have it updated and put it back on the December nineteenth, just for us to have one last look at it before we call a public hearing. So would we like to leave it the way it is and have, you know, have a chance to think about it? Or would you like to give him some direction and say, hey, strike one and just keep the other two requirements?
I, I think established lawfully is one of those phrases that legally is just a mess. So.
So you'd rather just see one taken out?
Uh, if, if those are my alternatives, yes.
I agree with that also.
Okay. And then we can have a discussion on, you know, i- if that makes sense for us before we call a public hearing on the nineteenth. So David, we'll forward that over to you.
Or Luke, you'll forward those.
Yeah.
Comments.
Um, uh, with regards to the public notice, if we want this to be discussed at the January meeting, we'll need to notice it before the next meeting. I just want to make sure everyone's comfortable with that.
Is that because of holiday schedules?
It's because there needs to be fifteen days before. So the next, the meeting is on the nineteenth. Um, the earliest I could get it in a newspaper after the nineteenth would be the twenty-sixth, and that's fourteen days before the planning commission meeting on the ninth, not fifteen, which is perfect. I know, so.
Our meeting is January.
Ninth.
No, no. Isn't it night sixteen?
Third.
The third Thursday.
Sorry, we've got plenty of time. That's my bad. Sorry, everybody.
I wish we threw everybody off by having this early meeting.
Okay.
I know, because I was like, go on, wait.
You get one, Luke.
I think it's, I think it's the sixteenth. Any other discussion on that item?
Um, for what's worth, I won't be here on the nineteenth. I'm fine with this.
Appreciate that. Because again, we're, we'll have it as a public hearing. At the public hearing, it still will require us to make the decision to approve it for as a recommendation to council, which that means if we approve it on January sixteenth, they would then go to the workshop for the next council meeting. They would then vote on it. Which then means that the earliest of some of these non-conforming A D Us that are looking at special land use could come before us, potentially be February.
Yeah. Uh, i- if city council is happy with all those changes, then the February meeting would be three accessory dwelling unit rental applications.
And we also kind of summarize that for anybody who's out there listening, wanting to know kind of what the timeline was going to be for them. All right. So we'll close that discussion, which will take us then to item B, which is the five fifteen St. Joseph Street, public hearing for a special land use request for a rental of an accessory dwelling unit. I will open this up as a public hearing, but one of the questions, I guess, that I now have for David and.
Yeah, I'll introduce it very quickly and I'll turn you over to Doug. Um, so five fifteen St. Joseph Street uh, is a special land use application for a, uh, short-term rental license for an accessory dwelling unit. Um, these guys have been renting for a number of years. They do have a non-conforming structure because it has its own utilities. Um, and obviously we have some, some comments and concerns laid out in the packet for you. And we have Doug and Bonnie Lowe here to answer questions.
I, I, were they going to make a presentation or? Yeah, please do.
I'm going to move on to let the applicant go ahead and.
You've sat through all this so far, so absolutely.
Why some of the things.
Sure, please do. Or I'm not the chair, but.
So Bonnie, my wife and I have been full-time residents of Sawtuck for fifty-one years. Uh, you might find it interesting that when we were looking for a house fifty-one years ago, we were looking in April, May, we came into Sawtuck, that some, several different places. It's a sleepy little town, that this would be a great place to, to raise kids and to, to live here. Uh, so and we ended up buying our first little house at that time. And we moved in on Venetian festival of uh, uh, of nineteen seventy-three. And so we had no idea like, wow, this is a transformation. So anyhow, the current house that we, that we live in is at five fifteen St. Joseph Street. It's a, it's one parcel as two, but two building lots. Our house at five fifteen St. Joseph is on one lot. And then our three-car garage with a small apartment above is, um, on the other lot, which is technically door ten Mary Street. So we have that corner of Mary and St. Joseph. Bonnie wanted to make a few comments.
Well, we, we tried to separate.
we, we tried to separate it. Um, each one of the places has the regular setbacks. It has its own address because that is important for safety and emergency vehicles. If somebody was renting, they shouldn't come to our house. We might not even be home and we wouldn't know what the emergency was or where to send them. So it has its own address. Each has its own yard. It has, they have their own. We have our driveway. They have their driveway with off-street parking. Each has its own utilities, gas, electric, water, sewer and cable or internet. Well, you have to do separate cable and internet. They don't like it when you pipe it into some other place as well as your place and you only pay for one service. Um. And we thought because this is a separate lot, but that was a better plan for the future that eventually we might be gone after fifty some years, who knows? Um, and it might be a separate entity. And to have all those things connected to the people next door could create problems. So that's the way we set it up all those years ago. Um, however, now it doesn't need the specific criteria. And so move on.
So we've rented this one bedroom apartment as a short term rental for about six years. Um, uh, uh, neither the garage or the apartment rental has adversely affected the neighborhood or the R one, uh, R one neighborhood plan. Um, over the years, we've had many couples that have come and stayed at the apartment. And it's only big enough for two people. That's why the way we like it. It's not a party house. And if it was, became a party house, we lived right next door. And so we know what was going on anyhow. Anyhow, many of our clients or guests or renters um, have come back um, uh, time and again, because they enjoy Sagatuck, they enjoy the uh, facility. They love it, that they have a place to park and they can walk two blocks and maybe can be down in the melee of all the things going on and places to spend your money. So, um, you know, I think we've added a, a value to the city in that we've given people more options and they're not out at the American Inn and and have to drive in and then go around and around and around and around looking for a parking place. They already have one. They could just walk down here. So we would just like to continue the renting and um, you have any questions?
Not at this time. Thank you. What was it?
Only rented it for six years. Before that, it was there a long time before that, but it was Doug's painting studio.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, it wasn't original. I guess we we um, allow skip to step there.
Any questions?
Question, yeah. Is it officially a ADU on the parcel records?
Also, sometimes, uh, you know, when the assessor will go out, he will designate something ADU, but um, it's not something where I I'm looking at their account and just seeing, yes, has an ADU. Yeah.
Okay. Well, it's, it's pretty clear on there whether ADUs are allowed. There's a whole paragraph form from what I remember.
Uh.
Okay.
That's not something I'm aware of. I will brush up on that. Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
Are we talking about the counter account, the county assessor's records or what are, what are we referring to?
It's.
Because I looked at the plat today and it doesn't. It doesn't talk about that. It just shows that their plot, their plot has two lots with two buildings on it, but I'm just, I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, it's the one I can look at online. I don't have, I don't know what it's called. Could be. Yeah, it sounds like, yeah, 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 because it's.
Do you get two separate tax bills?
No. One.
It's one tax book, correct? It's one tax ID. Oh, for the purse.
That's. Um, an issue was raised and let's just try to tamp it down, get rid of it. Um, your um, dormer windows. People don't live in the dormer windows, do they?
No.
You don't have a little bed stuck in them or or something like that.
Just for light.
Yeah, there's, there's, you have light and um,
there's some bookshelves.
And there's some outdoor furniture that were storied there because we had to.
Sure.
It was, it was mentioned and I just want to.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Because that would bump you if.
Right.
This is why I mentioned it. Right. Because we're talking about living space, not square footage.
But I'm confused. Why wouldn't that be living? Why wouldn't that be part of the calculation?
Because under definition, it's what? Bathing, cooking, living, sleeping, bathing, eating and cooking. So if they're not living, sleeping, bathing, eating or cooking in that space.
Doesn't count.
I'm sorry?
It doesn't count.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
I just. A dormer can be, can, I mean, they might have narrow dormers in this situation, but there can be very lo, uh, wide dormers on certain with certain designs that can include a lot of extra living space that you can stand in front of a window, have a bed there, have a chair. It adds a lot of square footage. Um, I, I think we'd be on a slippery slope if we're going to exclude areas under dormers. Um, I think there's going to be, that there'd be a lot of other situations that uh, would, would add a lot of extra square footage on.
Well, let's move to public comment because we're actually getting deliberation at this point. Um, any other questions for the applicant? If no other questions for the applicant, let's open up the public comments regarding this application. If anyone would like to speak in the room, go up to the microphone, again, your name and limit your comments to three minutes. If you're online, raise your hand. Seeing none in the room? See any? Don't see any online. So therefore we will close the public comments. We have no supporting, no opposing. That would then move us to commission deliberation. And I think the one thing they're just going to, going to kick it off with is when you look at the recommendations that was on page sixteen and seventeen in our kits. And this kind of goes back, this is why we flipped the discussion, because there's a couple of items in here. You know, where the ordinance is currently written is that this ADU has to be compliant with all of the one fifty four point two two point oh two two W, which currently this one is not. But if we made the change to the ordinance that we were just discussing to where, because it has been in existence and if, yes, it has the two service lines, it would be eligible. Right? So that was one of the things that we were discussing is like, well, could we really prove it or should it be tabled until we just determine what we're doing with the ordinance? Because with the way it currently is, it doesn't meet the requirements of one fifty four point two two W. But as a special land use, you do have the consideration to still be able to make the approval. So.
You do. Obviously with, uh, we, we tabled a four fifty spare. If, because we were going to discuss these regulations, so I think it would be more appropriate to, yeah, table it and then we will revisit all of them once we made some decisions. Because of course, you may approve this and then decide, actually, we don't want to change anything. Uh, which hopefully is not the case, may be the case. So, uh, yeah, I would suggest tabling it for now.
Because if we were to somehow approve it tonight, it would violate the ordinance.
Yeah, right.
And if we denied it, then I think.
They can't come back in front of us.
Problem bringing it back to us.
For one year. Two years or one year?
I think tabling is the only.
Least one.
I think tabling is the only viable option.
That's what I was, I think that it's part of our best. Because again, I don't want to approve something and say, okay, we violated the ordinance. And then the next time something comes in front of us is like, well, you did it for that. So again, yeah. So I will.
Do they withdraw it or do we table it?
But, no, technically you would, you would motion to postpone.
Yeah.
Um, I just looked at the different, the tabling, it would mean it came back within the same meeting. So we would postpone it to a later date. And then we would notify them that they'd be seen at what have a date.
Right. Because I think the concern was if we had a withdrawal, they would actually have to do a new application in which, which, which requires a new fee. So do we have a motion to postpone this to a later meeting? We don't have to give the date of the meeting. We don't have to say February or.
Yes, Chairman Mans, I'll make a motion to, um, we're delaying, delay the decision on five fifteen St. Joseph.
Second.
Second.
I'll say.
This, I think, would be a roll call, Sarah. This would be a roll call on the motion to postpone.
Yes.
Sir.
Yes.
Do you say that?
Yes.
Yes.
Man.
Yes. Yes. Very good.
And being, I say that being a neighbor of Doug and Bonnie, um, they're wonderful neighbors. So I just wanted to say that.
I'd like to say the same thing because we're neighbors as well. And in fact, little trivia here. My best friend in third grade in Chicago was the nephew of the people who owned it prior to the Doudings. Well. Um, I actually went into that house before she passed and and uh, define the term boarding, I believe, but no, she was a very, very nice woman.
Maybe. Again, we don't want to put you through the postponement field for several months, but we also want to make it something that because of all these comments that you can comfortably approve. Very good. So let's move us down to the next item underneath new business is one forty nine Lucy Street. The public hearing for a special land use request for a proposed single family resident with an area a floor plant area that exceeds the ratio of point three to one. So with that, I will open up public hearing for one forty nine Lucy in our packet, starting on page twenty eight. It gives you kind of the synopsis of the ordinance as, as it stands, the overview and then the comments from Luke as well as David, ending with a recommendation, you know, on page thirty four. Um, at this time, I will ask the Sony Administrator and Director of Planning if they would like just kind of give this quick overview of it or you want to hand it off to David.
Yeah. So, um, tonight we have Barry Chesterman with us, the owner of one four nine Lucy, who is very excited for this meeting. Uh, this was one of the, one of the items on the October meeting. Um, and so they have a proposal to build a second story addition on their house. Um, the reason it's before you today is because the proposal puts them over the thirty percent um, floor area ratio requirement or point three to one. Uh, and so because of that, they need special land use approval. I will say that the structure that exists is currently nonconforming. It is within the setbacks of the district. Oh, sorry. It's with, it's within its own setbacks. Um, however, the proposal is conforming. Um, it is set back far enough from the lot lines to where they wouldn't need any kind of variance for this. This is this, other than the floor area ratio, it meets, um, or as far as we know, it meets the, the um, code of ordinances and zoning ordinance. And I say as far as we know, because obviously after this, they'll need to apply for a zoning permit. That's when review begins. Um, and so, yeah, they are here tonight to talk about the project.
Very good. We'll ask for presentation by the applicants. That's all right. Sorry, I have to get up there.
It's all right. So I guess I have something to lose on. Um, have you all had a chance to go through what we have submitted in terms of the photographs and what?
Yes, we have. Yes.
I believe.
Okay. So I think the key points, uh, as Luke said, it's nonconforming now because it's forty four. The, the actual existing house is forty four percent of the lot coverage. With the addition and including that, which is another eight hundred and fifty square feet on the second floor, that will bring that ratio of the total square footage of the house to the lot, that will bring it up to about sixty three percent. Now, Barry can share with you just information from houses surrounding the area that all exceed the requirements. So I mean, this is the kind of the issue that we guys were discussing earlier. You know, half the houses in Sagatuck probably don't need what the current zoning codes are. So um, if you want to continue, Sarah, just give a brief.
To clarify, the lot coverage is not increasing. The lot coverage is remaining the same. This is specific to floor area ratio.
And then if you go to that, I think it's the things. You know, the houses you can see already sits on the lot, so. Uh, but the next one kind of tells the story in terms of that's that, but. There, the, that, that yellow area represents a superimposition of the planned second floor over the existing first floor. And it accommodates both the side of the rear setbacks.
So the, um, the reason for the addition, the reason for the request for the addition is our growing family. We have children. We have, uh, uh, one married, one with a very stable partner. Um, two grandchildren currently. And we love to have visit us uh, last year and this coming year. Uh, we are already planning to rent additional units because we have five bedrooms today, two bathrooms, not really enough for the number of people and especially with the two grandkids. Um, so we're hoping to be able to accommodate our growing family. Uh, just in terms of the surrounding area. Um, I looked at the houses on Lucy. The houses around the existing block of Butler and Water Street and Dunham, uh, just down the street. And almost half, almost half of the houses, forty, forty seven point eight percent of the houses, thirteen out of fifteen, thirteen out of twenty five of the houses are already over that thirty percent lot coverage. Um, and that's using BSA online data. Um, there was also a question that came up during the historic commission, uh, which we were fortunate enough to be accepted by the historic commission for this, uh, this plan. Um, there was a question about whether it would be too high. And, uh, we're currently a one-story building. Uh, eighteen of the twenty five buildings, including counting the condos, is just one, one building on border, one building on Butler. Eighteen of twenty five are two or three stories. So we, we believe that this would not be an unusual um, size building for the area. Um, I have specifics. If you would be interested in looking at all the houses on the street, I could share information with you if you feel it would be valuable. Otherwise, I'll take this one with me.
I think I'm good.
If I may have a question for the homeowner.
Question for the.
When you bought the house, the footprint is now, did you add to the house?
Uh, the footprint has not changed and I'm not sure when the last, well, actually, it says the last remodel on BSA online says that it was remodeled in two thousand and five. Um, there may be some specific knowledge that, uh, that Bobby has bought the house. That's what BSA online says.
We, my husband, um, and I once owned their house.
Oh, my goodness.
Yes. It was, uh, Bob wanted to get into the short-term rental business, believe it or not. And so he did. And, uh, we did no remodeling. So it wasn't, we didn't, uh, let's see, that would have been probably around two thousand, I don't know, eight or nine, um, that we acquired it, I think. I can't remember now. I can't remember now.
We acquired it in two thousand and eleven, so I'm I'm not certain when when the house was most recently added on to, but it's pretty clear that it has. Been added on to at least once, probably twice over the years. It's possible that the uh. Westernmost area was at one point a garage.
Looks like it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But no, we have not modified the uh, the outdoor space at all.
Okay.
Mark. I, um, do you remember when the? Okay. You don't remember when the, when it was last? Oh, that's what I thought. Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? If not, uh, thank you, and we will move on to the public comments regarding this application. Once again, if you're in the room, please come up, state your name. Address and limit your comments to three minutes. If you're online, raise your hand and we will get to you after we cover the room. I see we have one. Welcome, Mark.
Mark Klungle, seven forty-seven Water Street. And one fifty-three Lucy, changing property. I'm just, I have, we have concerns about this. Moving forward on another addition on this house, this house is, doesn't meet the side setbacks. Rear setback, in fact, it encroaches on our property on two sides. So i- i- if you took all the space where it normally would be setbacks. And the encroachment onto our property, you take all that space that shouldn't be built on, it equals the size of this addition. So this house already. You know, as the ratio say, you know, it's a hundred and fifty percent of the ratio of land. To building. It it it's, this is sixty-five foot, sixty-two by sixty-two foot lot, I mean. And, you know, it it's a two thousand square foot house on a sixty-five by sixty-five lot, it's five bedrooms, uh, two baths. And it already encroaches. Now, the addition, as you see in the yellow. Is the footprint of what the house should be. And now we're we're adding another layer on top, and yes, it's conform. But all of that space around it is built into either our property or what should be setbacks. So we're we're just putting so much in there, it only has room for two cars parking. And you're you're covering a lot, and you're going to basically have a eight-bedroom house. Or five baths. On sixty-five, sixty-five lot. It it's concerned. A, I mean, two stories, the neighborhood around it are all story and a half, two-story houses, that's that's normal of adding a story up. But it is already a very large footprint. On a lot, and you're trying to put. A lot into it, so it's a concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's say applicant in a public, yes.
Uh, we actually have room for four vehicles to park um. In the house, obviously. Um, and yes, the house does overstep the side of the uh, the lot. Clearly, the setbacks were not originally followed. Um, although historically, I believe that since these happened a long time ago. I believe that it's a probably grandfather damage. If the house were to burn down, it wouldn't be able to build on the current setback. As we are over the lot line, across ninety-four inches in a couple of areas, no question about it. Uh, the person who's running the house was the. At seven forty-seven Water Street, so that was well-known at the time of the sale.
Thank you.
Uh, real quick question. So with you being over lot lines, you were able to obviously get clear title when you bought the house?
Yes.
Any other? Comments in the room?
Chance, I understand concerns about the scale and lot size and everything. Did you have a chance to actually look at the rendering and finish?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Because I don't think. No, yes, the house is over, goes over the setbacks, but that's, it's in that way for however.
Good, thank you. Any other public comments? Room seed none online? I don't see any, you don't see any, Sarah? Then we will close public comments. We had one comment kind of opposing. And the two gentlemen who will be applicants in favor. At this time, we will.
There was a lot of written comments.
I'm sorry, did I miss that?
Yeah, I did receive some correspondence, which I did.
Yes, yes.
All right, just just so.
I appreciate that, thank you. So we did have. One correspondence that was sent to us.
It was also against the project.
And since I don't have it confirmed right now, his his point was. His was, I'm writing regards to to the planning. Approval requirement for one forty-nine Lucy, we do not support this motion based on the following, the lot area increase that substantially has. No precedence, this burden is self-created, likely non-compliant lot area ratio as well, which the design does not seem. To correct. That is, design graphics do not appear to align with historical charm of the order, historical charm ordinance. That was the written comments, and that was by Chris Visi. So with that, we will close the public comment section and open up for Commissioner deliberation. One thing that. That has. Come up again. Couple of years ago, I remember even when Cindy was still here as kind of the planning and zoning administrator. We started having discussions that we do have a number of things in some of our ordinances that she had highlighted. And we would like to try to bring forward and try to address. One of the issues was this floor area ratio, because as David can probably tell you. Is that he was looking at a lot of the other cities that he works with, no one else has a floor area ratio in. Their zoning ordinances, they have a lot coverage. And, you know, if you meet the lot coverage, you meet the setbacks, and you have a height requirement, which allows you to have like a two-story. Then you're allowed to build two stories, and it's not a square footage versus the size of the lot. Ours currently has that. Now, and this one is very unique because in this zone, the CRC, the lot coverage is twenty-five percent. And then they were saying the floor area ratio is point three. So that means if you had any, if you build up to the lot coverage and you added. Small square footage, you'd be over the point, the point three, so this was a great example of where we were saying that. Or it didn't make sense, and I could remember when I was going back, that was one of the areas that Cindy had kind of highlighted in. But because of some of the other challenges we had, like with waterfront and with short-term rental, we didn't really go back and start addressing. Um, so to just kind of put that out there only because it's probably not something that is unique. I was looking at this, many of the houses that have been built. That they would either be over that currently, or they would be over it if they were adding a second story. And so as. Then I know, kind of get the heart, the court, the horse in front of the cart, and we're talking about twenty-twenty-five goals, but one of the things that I do think we do need to bring back up. Is to kind of go back and at least identify some of these areas that have been pointed out to us previously. Where we might not have consistency between different zones, because some of our zones don't have this requirement. Just so happens this this falls within a zone that does. But it still gives us the ability to go ahead and approve, as long as it meets the current requirements of the setbacks right now.
That's sorry about the feedback, guys.
Story meets.
Okay.
I I assume it makes, it's still within the twenty-five percent lot coverage that you stated?
Yeah, so lot coverage is is, you know. Because we're building up within the existing footprint, and we're not expanding in any way, the footprint of the structure isn't changing at all, but the the lot coverage would remain the same.
Which is compliant or non-compliant?
Not compliant.
So it's over the twenty-five of that zone, non-compliant, okay.
And the reason why it's before us has a special land use is because it didn't meet that one requirement of floor area ratio.
And the non-conformity is not increasing with this, sorry, it's a non-conforming structure, but.
Existing non-form is unchanged.
Yeah, exactly.
And not building would not reduce it, so.
Correct. Absolutely.
Right.
Well, that's one, and and it was. Why I asked the question, the current owners. Create the non-conforming. Um, so. They're at least harmless or blameless as to. Pre-existing situation, and they're not exacerbating the situation, while they are, but they're not doing it by. For dealing with. Forty-something to sixty-something percent, um, you're already over, it's like, you know, shall I have? Third cupcake instead of just two. Um, the other thing um, is, as I drive around town. The number of, and I think it is. Just the nature of a resort town, the number of houses that appear to be be jammed onto too small of lots. Um, and I think that's what our ordinance was trying to to address. Um, but the fact remains that there are houses that are on the line, especially in the older part of town. Uh, in this section especially, um, and I I don't see. That it benefits city. In any way for us, the residents of the city or the, or the city itself. For us to deny their request of a second story. I am a little concerned about eight bedrooms and four bathrooms or five bathrooms. Um, but um, uh. You won't injure your house, but um. So I, my my gut right now says to, I will be willing to approve this this uh, request.
I agree with Mark, Mark articulated.
Very well, I do, and I. Follow the same camp, and I also would say it's. Future items which you kind of look at, is it just lot coverage and the height? Would be sufficient without a floor ratio, so you wouldn't have one of these come in front of you.
I would suspect this is a really old house, the original house. I mean, I think the, I think if you said what was the garage is now additional space. But you look at the house itself and and I, where it is in town. Um, I suspect it's a really, it it's a fairly old house, especially the neighborhood on Lucy and. Um, anyway.
Other deliberation?
It's not.
I think, I I guess I'm. Kind of following you, I'm leaning towards your camp, Mark, but I am. A little concerned is just looking at the the tri-community master plan, how this all fits into that, and trying to preserve. Low-intensity uses in residential areas, and.
This is an R four.
It is R four, yeah, which is a transition zone, correct, yeah.
Big difference between an R one.
Exactly, it's different from R one, but still looking at the, I guess, the master plan doesn't discriminate between that and is looking at trying to preserve character. Um, and I think that this is good, but then I worry about the the next owners and and what what can this be going forward, and. Now we have this eight-bedroom house, and it's only, can be one, huh? Six, excuse me, yeah, so I I think I'm I'm following the mark, but it's just a concern because is this the start of more?
I'm confused. I thought you said you had five bedrooms and two baths currently. And you're adding three bedrooms and two baths? Oh, okay. I got you. Thanks, thanks. For anybody who didn't hear him, it is going to become, they're turning one of the downstairs bedrooms into a dining room, so that removes one of the bedrooms, so your. Plan is to have six, seven bedrooms. Seven bedrooms or five bathrooms.
It's a lot of bathrooms. It's a lot of bathrooms.
Yep.
If there's no other deliberation, do we have a motion?
I'll move. But I didn't see language.
Don't have a sample motion.
We don't have a simple motion.
I'll move that the um. Special land use request for a proposed single-family residence uh, at one forty-nine Lucy as presented be approved.
I second.
And we will do a roll call.
Uh, that would.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Case.
All right, I will be in touch.
Very good, moves us to the next item of new business. First-floor apartments in the C-two waterfront preservation district and the PUD departures. To review of the draft ordinance amendment and the public hearing. Public hearing for a proposed text amendment. Is it really a public hearing?
Uh, thi- this one is a public hearing, yeah. Now, I I will say, um. Obviously, there's there's quite a lot of. We'll probably need to discuss this quite a bit, so if we feel we need to leave the public hearing open. Um, then you don't necessarily need to make a motion today.
But it was to set a public hearing, not to conduct.
I think that we did discuss that we would set a public hearing at this meeting.
Right.
And I then set it preemptively, purely, but it 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 went to the newspaper, um, so it was publicly noticed. Yeah.
Right, this is, we have a public hearing tonight on this, because the agenda does not say it, discussion.
It does say. That's what, I missed this part, we're reading today. It says that it's a.
Oh, and public hearing, sorry.
Review of the draft ordinance and a public hearing of the proposed testament. It is, it's just.
That's my one, sorry.
No, it was also. Because I think earlier today, when we were going over the agenda and the items, because we are going to be discussing whether we want to add. Any restrictions regarding height. I thought it was kind of unique that we would make a decision on that and then immediately have a public hearing, but. But that you've already noticed it, so I guess.
Yeah, so this this was noticed, yeah.
Uh, we we don't have anything immediately coming before us. So we could just discuss it to make our recommendation and then.
We could, we could, we can open the public hearing and leave it open if you want. Um, and then it would remain open the next time it comes back. Uh, I believe that legally, that's okay. Is that right, Trent?
Yeah, that's correct. You can, you can postpone it while it's still open, and then without having to notice it in the newspaper again, you could. Re-uptake that previously opened public hearing. I will just note in the. Planning Commission's bylaws, though, um, there's a provision that requires the date, time, and place for reconvening to be established before the meeting is adjourned. Uh, which I assume would be the next meeting, but just so you're aware of that requirement as well.
So we could have the discussion here, then call the public hearing. And. Postpone the public hearing until. The December nineteenth meeting.
You open it, and then we discuss.
Absolutely. Oh, we'd open it, then do this, because I didn't know if we wanted to discuss the height thing first or not. Then we will open public hearing for. The ordinance changes and amendments to the first-floor apartments of the waterfront preservation district and PUD departures. So in our kit, we've got. The language that is being proposed. For. Two of the items, and I'll let Luke or David kind of walk us through the. Summary of how we got here.
Yeah. So obviously, uh, in the September meeting, some concerns, um, and sorry, prior to the September meeting, concerns were raised. Um, in regards to the use of first floor apartments, um, in the C one district. Uh, I I believe that the thought was that allowing them by right or by special land use, um, would. Es- essentially, um, will be a concern for the public use of the boardwalk. Um, and so it was suggested that this, uh, be removed from. Uh, permitted uses, special uses, uh, and there was a discussion about it remaining in in. PUD, uh, and I think, uh, Dave can probably address this a little better than myself as he, um, wrote it. Uh, but we've got a couple of options within the packet for you guys. To consider.
And underneath both options, we are removing. The language for first floor apartments. The two different options that you have in front of us. And David can go into a little more detail as to. The rationale from a legal standpoint of why it also needed moved to where we couldn't make it a requirement. Hey, you give us the boardwalk, we'll consider this. Um, so it's been removed and then the the comment came up, you know, should we actually incorporate a height? So the two different. Ordinances that will be reviewed. Have two different recommendations regarding if we want to limit the height, you know, of of a building, or we don't have to address it at all. Regarding.
So just to be clear, Chairman, so that would be to exclude first floor residential use.
Correct. And so what you'll notice because. Including this as part of the summary as opposed to public deliberation, but it did, I get a question on this. What was in our kit, you'll notice we've got a couple, some things are highlighted. That's the highlight of the options between only the height. But if you're looking at the sections, which was in our October discussions. Or September's discussions, we've already, um. He's recommending that for the section C two. It be changed for, you know, from first floor apartments, except for those facing Water Street, that would be stripped. Um, upper floor apartments. Same thing for the waterfront preservation district in section two. He's, we're noting that it would now remove first floor apartments and would just be upper floor. So those technically are changes to what's in the waterfront, but since that's not really up for discussion, because from a legal standpoint, they said that that's what needed to be, it's not highlighted yet. So it's. With that, we will open up for public comments in regards to. This application. And this zoning recommend zoning change. Anyone in the room, once again, for a public hearing, you come up to the microphone, you state your. Name and limit your comments to three minutes. Is we have no one in the room?
Is it possible for Councilwoman Peterson to? The the speakers were not good at the very beginning, and I know she made comments on this and I don't know if it's appropriate for her to. If she can kind of re. Notes.
And Chris, I don't know. I see your hand is up, so we will go to Chris.
Thank you.
If you unmute and then.
Can you hear me?
Still very little.
Very little. I I tried to turn it up and Sarah helped a little bit, so I'll just get closer. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. I oppose six C of section one, five, four point zero, three, eight, six, two, which is actually the PUD's departures. Section two A on page sixty-one. Uh, the goal of this is to preserve the boardwalk. As as we all know, the the property owners own the boardwalk and could close it at any time. Uh, the way this is written is that a developer could get the permission for a PUD if they pro- provide public access. And they would do that by reducing or eliminating the side setbacks, reducing the waterfront setback to ten feet and eliminating lot coverage requirement. Uh, potential, this has, this closes off the view shed. Uh, the PUD going directly up to the boardwalk and side to side, there would be no view between the sides. So I believe that the this needs to be made smaller. You certainly don't want a larger dwelling. It just strikes right at the issue of density. Because right now, PUD could go right up to the ten-foot boardwalk, be thirty-seven feet tall and cover the lot side by side. I would ask that all PUD requirements should be less than what they are now, and those measurements should be specifically listed, and they should not be allowed to go larger. Looking at this, a PUD right now on every available lot to go to six, ten feet up to the boardwalk. Go side by side and go thirty-seven feet high, and I don't know if that's from the front of the lot or the back of the lot. So I would also ask that in order to protect the waterfront, the view shed and the boardwalk. Safest way would be to require all first floor units to be commercial waterfront and street side, and that that would then run with the with the land. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments? That will close the public comments portion of the meeting. And we'll open it up for a commission deliberation.
Yeah, apologies for this, guys. I'll I'll. I'll troubleshoot this, uh, before the next meeting and just make sure that we're. Oh, my gosh.
There we go.
Thank you, Bobby. I think we should give her a round of applause, to be honest.
Yeah, thank you.
Glad we found that. An hour and thirty-six minutes in.
Yes.
So comments in regards to. Proposed amendment. Option one and option two.
So if I'm trying to boil this down. But. Councilwoman Peterson is suggesting is just taking out subsection two. Just. Not giving the PUD. Not giving City Council Plan Commission the option to. Do those things. The. Initial discussion and why I think this was put in. Was the idea of. Actually increasing. The view from Water Street, for example, that if if the PUD. Wanted to, and I'm being side yard setbacks, if the PUD wanted two buildings that had less than, say, the ten feet. Maybe they were actually a foot apart. But then. On the other side, there'd be twenty feet. So somebody walking down Water Street. Maybe there'd be a walkway that they could, there'd be more instead of two little chunks of view of the water, there'd be a nice big chunk of view of the water. Um, and and so I think that's why there was in there. That doesn't address the setback from the waterfront. Um, but, um.
The other thing that. Or we were all kind of part of it. It has been a while for each of us and some maybe were part. If you recall, when we were creating this, we also had the difference between the Water Street North and Water Street South. And Water Street North at that time had a hundred percent lot coverage, zero setbacks. And. Water Street South, you know, had setbacks, and so we tried to. Go with what was in Water Street South, but then still needed to be aware that in Water Street North, they needed some flexibility. As many of the buildings up there currently are lot line to lot line, and they are built out to the. Edge, you know, within ten feet of of the water. And so to give that kind of flexibility that if somebody was trying to redevelop on that northern end of. Waterfront preservation, they could come to us with a PUD and it could be reviewed. You know, as to. Minimums. And one of the things that like Mark was saying is that we looked at and said, so you put a ten, a ten foot on each side. Was that if they wanted to move it, because instead of building right next to them is. On the lot line and they were on the lot line, they wanted to build on the lot line, but they'd have to leave twenty feet there. On the other side. So it gave them that flexibility. They wouldn't have to hit side setbacks and go. Again, I'm just kind of saying what we could potentially have come come in front of you. That was why it was still allowed to go through as a PUD. Wasn't saying that you would just allow them to build lot like a lot line. It was to give them flexibility to be able to move within it. Now, one of the discussions I've had, you know, with. Councilwoman Peterson and a few others is that somebody said, well, you're kind of reliant on. Future planning commissions. And I said, well, that's kind of what. Has always been in place is that you set up the expectation or that you rely on the future planning commission to make the best case. And when it comes before them, without trying to really limit it and say this is. The only thing you can do, you know, on on these lots. And that's, again, was kind of the rationale for why it exists currently. And why the PUD option became available.
I I'm sorry, and I have a question. I I don't see in here. In what was provided to us, um. Where are we looking at if we were going to take out first floor apartments? Is that in the next ordinance, like on page sixty-three?
So if we look at page sixty-one and then underneath option one, it's page sixty-one, then on option. Two, which is that the only difference between those two is the height part of it. But if you look at the amendment that's listed underneath section one, so this ordinance, section one. Is making the amendment. The zoning ordinance is hereby amended by the amendment of one, five, fours point zero, three, eight, C dash two, down front water. Downtown waterfront preservation district, paragraph B. Subparagraph four, letter C, to be changed from. First floor apartments and upper level apartments, except for first floor apartments shall not face Water Street, to be changed to upper floor apartments. And then that also had to be changed because on section two, which is the one four, one, five, four dot zero, three, eight. Um, which is part of the HUD considerations. Then we needed to make that same change to stipulate that C is now upper floor apartments only. So you're taking out basically the first floor and upper floor apartments. So by passing, so if council was to. Receive this as a recommendation and pass it, those items then. Or amend what was originally in the waterfront preservation without us going back and fully changing the waterfront preservation code.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and just to clarify and reiterate what you said, um, sections one and two are the same in both options. And the reason it looks like a little bit of a repeat between section one and section two is that section one is is, uh, striking. Uh, the ground floor as permitted uses, so it's permitted in a case that does not involve a significant exterior change. So if there's an existing building and the first floor was being, uh, we we originally allowed for an existing building, a first floor to be converted. Uh, without a in a significant exterior change, that'd be permitted. But if it was a a new building with apartments on the first floor, that would be a significant exterior change, and that was a special land use in in paragraph, uh, section two. So that's really why we have two areas that we need to strike the same language and replace with the same language to upper floor apartments. And then concerning section three, the planning development, uh, the only reason this is in front of you in this ordinance is because. We originally thought, okay, well, if we strike this option for first floor apartments. Why don't we maybe consider allowing it through the PUD option, uh, that we already have in the ordinance? Um, and those those, uh. The qualifications, uh, to have certain types of of modifications in this district. Is the thirty-three percent open space or the pathway across the the waterfront yard, that's already in the ordinance, so we're not debating that. I mean, there's a concern with removing that from this ordinance. That's already in the current city ordinance, and there there are reasons for that, a- as you had mentioned. We've actually increased setbacks and increased lot coverage requirements, um, in in the south and north. Um, so the having the PUD allows for some flexibility from that increase i- in 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 those requirements that we added. But. Originally, we were going to allow for the. Ground floor apartments to be considered through the planning and development process if they provided the open space. Uh, based on legal review and and Trent might could explain this a bit more than I could, uh, but the. Restrict, the allowance for first floor apartments. If you gave the open space, there's not enough of of a a direct correlation between a land use regulation like like the use. Versus a dimensional open space requirement. And based on on case law, uh, Trent and his associates weren't comfortable with. Allowing the the this for that provision for the PUD process. So we struck that completely. Uh, they were comfortable with us allowing for the opens, the open space provision. To be able to earn you other modifications dimensionally, but but not for the the dwelling unit on the first floor. Um, so if if you need a full legal analysis, Trent is here to explain. Uh, but otherwise, the only reason we kept in this planned unit development section in number three here. Is because a- as we looked at this section, we thought it was a better idea just to to bullet point out. Um, A and B, so you under A, you have one, two, three, four, and under B, you have one, two for the authorized, um. Uh, departures, uh, in the in this district. And so we we bulleted it out and tried to clarify this provision that's already in the current ordinance. Um, but then during the conversations, we were we were thinking a lot about the the bulk and scale of buildings and we thought, well. You know what? Should someone actually be able to propose a building height modification through the PUD process? So. During that conversation, there's the one perspective is that, you know what, maybe we should not allow any sort of PUD modifications for height. The other train of thought was, well, maybe if there's something very innovated innovative, we would allow a very, um. Limited increase in height. So, uh, that's what why we have two different options under this PUD section three is that. We wanted the planning commission to to, uh, a- address if we should allow height variations at all, and if we do, should we put. A a guardrail on it, like a maximum, as as we note here, as thirty-five feet or three stories.
And then just add there to to David's comments on illegal, if I could, Mr. Chair, is, um. I think he did a pretty good job of explaining it. Uh, the the basic sort of. Summary of the the reason for the change was that we felt that this version that's current currently before the planning commission today. Was, uh, more defensible, um, than the previous version, although we do think the previous version, um, was defensible. Uh, it's just that this version that removes the first floor, um, requirement or allowing, it doesn't, it no longer allows the first floor. Um, dwellings to be allowed, um. Has a closer connection to the. Underlying land use impacts that we're trying to address. So by allowing. Diminished setbacks along the waterfront, um, or things of that nature, we're also then. Approving it or we're requiring a waterfront access to be preserved. So while those two are 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 linked, there's more of a nexus there. Um, we felt that there was less of a nexus, um, in the previous draft. So while we thought they were both defensible, we think this is a better, um. A better position for the city to take on this matter. I'd be happy to answer any specific legal questions you have about that change, if you have any, or or we could address it further, but just wanted to add to David's comments there.
Very good. And then to what David was saying, so that's why we have the two different versions also then on the on the height. Um. Because I've had a number of people have said, well, is there any possibility that could come before you and want to build four or five stories? And say, hey, we're going to put in a boardwalk. And so I think the consensus was, if you recall, when we were putting this together, we did allow. Within the ordinance that you could have up to a two and a half story of building. And but, you know, underneath our current guidelines, it would have a twenty-eight, but. But that would be for the main structure. So again, that half stories kind of already would be above anyway. So. The thirty-five was thought that that would be the maximum limit that anything could go, which means it could never be more than a three-story building. So that's why the two things that kind of were in front. Um, was either to to limit it and say that height cannot be discussed. As a, uh, option underneath the PUD or. To actually allow a PUD to make. Or to ma- have them make a. Request through a PUD to go up to thirty-five feet. Which would be insisted if you allowed for a full three story versus the two and a half store, as far as the height goes.
So if we do not add. The highlighted section under two, A, four on page. Sixty-four. We do not add thirty-five feet or three stories. The way it currently is, they cannot do more than two and a half stories?
It's two and a half stories. This is what they were allowed without having to do a PUD. But currently, they could come before us with a PUD. And they could ask for. Four stories or five stories. Because there's no limit on the height. So what we were saying is. If if we wanted to include. Height as a. Something that they can't go beyond. We could. Either say that there's there's no consideration, no, no PUD can be filed to try to get around the heights requirements with them and limit them to the two and a half stories. Eight feet from the main. The complete structure, which would be this really second floor. The two and a half stories, eight feet from the main complete structure, which would be this really second floor. Or we can uh, look at it and say we could be willing to grant. A full third level versus a half level on that, you know, the two and a half. Um, underneath a P U D consideration, assuming that you've got all those other requirements where they're giving you. Those access which we've laid out on the end of P U D. If you follow me on that.
I just wanted to clear what I heard because my my understanding reading. The existing P U D structure was that no way could the height restriction be exceeded. You're saying that that is open to the P U D process to be changed?
Yeah, because.
The two and a half story limit.
Through the P U D because currently we don't trust. He.
I I thought when I read it, the only thing that could be. Only setbacks could be changed, but maybe maybe I'm mistaken.
David, do you recall, are we correct that currently you could come before. Planning Commission with a P U D. And asking for. Larger building than even the two and a half through the P U D process with the way it's currently written.
Yes, current currently written, you could request any size building with any number of stories. Uh, it would still just need to meet your general P U D standards of approval. So and that would be, you know, considering the character of the area, considering. Consistency with other buildings, the intent of the district. So so as of right now, someone could uh, propose a very tall building. Uh, so what we're suggesting is you either say, no, we're not going to consider. Height exceptions at all, or yes, to a certain degree, and we put in the three story thirty five foot limit. So. It's just something that we thought is a height is really is something that was a big part of the whole waterfront. Preservation project of last year, and we thought this would ensure that we didn't receive applications that were just way out of line.
No, I'm I I like the guardrails. I I think it's lost some creativity, but doesn't allow them to go over thirty five. So I like option two.
Um, I I'll just say once again. Not that I doubt what you're saying. I don't have a copy of the ordinance in front of me. Irritates the crap out of me that we don't have a current set of ordinances. That we've been promised them for months and the and the the outside entity that updates our ordinances. Doesn't provide it. It's not provided online. It's not provided to us in paper copy. Um, with that said, taking him at his word. I and and we did surveys of this and people looked at proposed. Uh, uh, things that we in terms of design, I don't remember a single person saying, wow. Two stories, two and a half stories. That's too short. We should allow three stories. I don't remember a single person saying that. And if you look at people who talk about people who. You know much better than me, but people who look at the properties on Lake Street. I've heard it called, you know, the call of China. I mean, there, people are not happy. With more three story buildings, I don't think in this town. And so what I would suggest. Since apparently the P U D is quiet on this, silent on. That P U D um, type requirement mirror the other of two and a half stories, not three and a half story. That's that's.
Three and a half would never be allowed.
Three stories, I'm sorry, thirty three, three stories. Put it with in in what it otherwise would be, which is two and a half stories or what, twenty eight feet? Stick with that. Um, I don't think there's any sentiment in this town for a three story condos. And that's what people are fearful of of being developed on Water Street is some the homeless, like you were saying, whether it be four or five stories or even three stories. Um, that's not what people want in this town.
Hundred hundred percent agree with that.
Hundred percent. That would be option one. Yes.
My only comment when I was discussing both, if someone kind of shares that. The idea that if you were allowing two and a half feet and or two and a half stories, that the half story from the street. Could look very much like three stories. And if they wanted to build a two and a half story and then take away the boardwalk, they could because they own it. If they came before us and said, I want to build instead of two and a half, I want to build. Full third floor, but in doing so, I'm willing to preserve the boardwalk. And allow for the setbacks. That was the idea that that may be incentive to try to help keep the boardwalk. Would be to allow them to make a proposal, long as they're not building higher than thirty five feet. Let's.
Then why don't we also, the other part, under what page are we on? Sixty one, um, if I'm. Saying this correctly, where are we talking about? Kind of side yard setbacks, construction waterfront setback, protection of limited block coverage. Why don't we just take out reduction of minimum waterfront setback, not allow them in a P U D to eliminate. To to reduce the front, the waterfront setback.
Because we needed an incentive to for developers to provide open space. That as in the thirty three percent or the pathway crossing the entire waterfront yard. If if we. If we take that out, we we may not ever get the open space that that was really a priority through the waterfront project.
Open space, you mean side yard viewing? What what open space where?
O- open spaces being thirty three percent of the rear yard. So everything be between the building and the water. Thirty three percent of that would have to be preserved as as a publicly accessible open space. Or a waterfront walkway or boardwalk at least five feet wide that goes across the entire waterfront yard. So though if if a developer provides those. They could get the flexibility through the P U D process for setbacks. Height potentially uh, in in lot coverage. And so if we don't provide some incentives for it, the fear was that we might not get it at all. And in talking to to at least one developer in the last couple of months, you they 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 were open to providing that. Based on some flexibility with the zoning requirements that that were mentioned. Uh, otherwise, we might not get it. Because there's nothing we can do to say, hey, you have to do this. We can only incentivize it through this process.
Well, if they want to build on those lots, they do.
No, because they own. No, wait, Mark.
Not at the mercy of a developer.
No, Mark, but if they want to build based upon how it's currently zoned, they do not have to come in front of anyone. They can go and get a building permit. And then they can say, I'm not giving you any access to the boardwalk. The boardwalk, they own the boardwalk. The city doesn't have in a in a in a domain on the boardwalk. So they actually could build a two and a half story building with their setbacks without asking for anything. Other than what's required in the waterfront preservation and say, I'm no longer granting you access to this boardwalk. So the idea was if they wanted to do anything outside of what's allowed. That we would give them the abilities to have some flexibility. And that's what how I recall when we were putting the waterfront preservation together was. How do we try to leave some room where we can have some negotiating? Space with the developer to be able to say, hey, this is really important. Will you will grant you some some flexibility if you give us the assurance? That the boardwalk either goes a lot line, a lot line, or we have at least thirty three percent of the property. Available from the water, even if it doesn't have public access. It gives you public openness.
Just to address that, I I think that um, from what I can see in the waterfront preservation district. Most, if not all of the approved uses would fall under site plan review. So they they couldn't just come to me. And yeah, they would still have to come back before you. I mean, but the issue there is that if they do meet all of the standards, then.
We have to approve whether we like.
Yes. And obviously, the whole concept behind the plan unit development is that. You know, you're granting some kind of waiver for some kind of public benefit. The public benefit is quite evident. We want the boardwalk to be. Free and open and everyone to use it. So there needs to be some kind of leniency in regards to, I mean, if there's no, if they're not, if they don't need a waiver. Uh, if there's nothing that can be waived, then then what's the point in any of it?
And they really would never come. They would just build whatever it's meets all the things that come before you, the site plan. They would meet all the standards we'd have to approve. Um, and then. I'm assuming if I was a developer and all I was asking for was to be able to have a full third floor versus the half floor. And I was turned down, I'd say, well, so much for your board.
I think as far as we're concerned, this is a way for us to say, if you want waivers, the public benefit we want is this. And then if they can supply that.
Yeah, it's it seems to me we're. Choose the guardrail phrase, right? We're really widening the guardrails. Paraphrase, right? To protect the boardwalk. I understand. I guess.
You just, you're taking something.
Look at the setbacks. That's a big tool. I mean, you're given huge flexibility in terms of setbacks here. And now we're going to start raising the height requirements beyond what the public wants. Not sure it makes sense, but.
It it's seven feet. I don't have a real problem either way. I think it's good to put in here because the current setup allows them to do bring whatever.
At least this tells them. You're putting some restriction in because there has been, people have talked about like Mark was saying, you know, looking at. A four or five story type of proposal and saying, well, if you let us do this, we'll we'll maintain the boardwalk. And it's like, I don't even want that to come in front of. It's to have a limit of saying that can never even be considered, whether it's us doing the. The P U D approval or somebody else in these chairs.
But if there was a property that said, you know what? If you give me seven feet, I'll give you the boardwalk. I I might feel like that's a reasonable discussion.
Correct. And it's a two and a half story again, depending upon where that half story is. It's water street, it's going to look exactly the same.
Because it's slow.
And if I'm reading this correctly, it's thirty five feet. And three stories, so.
Couldn't squeeze four stories into thirty.
Well, or you can't do three stories that are thirty eight feet.
No, no, it would be limited.
It's important.
Correct, that absolutely is, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And you're saying that if we don't allow a potential developer to build up to. Thirty five feet or three stories, then they may say, well, gosh, we'll just. Not not give you our boardwalk. I'm sorry?
Me, the we could just meet you on the side of the few standards and then don't have the.
And it's just a kind of limit, anything coming before us that's going to be asking for four or five stories.
Well, whatever. Whatever you allow in the P U D is the maximum, which you can be sure a developer is going to take it, right? So. That's the other way to work with this.
Right, because they're going to maximize their profit.
If we're opening it up to three stories, we're going to get three stories. They're going to sit there and say, well, I'm just going to. Following existing rules and I'm going to take out the board.
And I'm picturing a two and a half store on there. I'm picturing a two story and the half story is a peaked roof. If you do three full floors, that's three full floors and a peak roof.
I think the peak.
They saw it to be under thirty five feet, but visually that's. Or flat roof.
That's correct. It would be for thirty five foot maximum, it would likely have to be a flat roof building, three stories.
Now, aren't the condos on Lake three stories plus parks, they're four stories tall, correct?
Some are.
And the the condos that were built along Lake, a lot of people make reference to.
Three developments there and some are.
Some are two, some are two or three, then one of them I think is four. There's three living and storage and garage at the bottom. Um, which I know that's that's, and then there's there's no break either because it's just one long consistent.
Right.
Forgive me for not knowing this. What is the standard now? Or what has the standard been historically?
Uh, currently it's in twenty, it's twenty eight feet. So we're, which would be accommodating for the two story and the half story above. So you'd be saying, you'd say you could, but you have, one of the recommendations is. Did not allow anything other than that to say, hey, height can't be.
No, I know.
Considered, or the thirty five feet, which would basically just mean that they could have a full third floor versus.
I understand that. The purpose of my question was that how long have we had that standard twenty eight feet? Because. We obviously have managed to negotiate.
The. Yeah, because you know, none of us, I wasn't around when they approved, you know, the ones along the water previously. And were they built before fourteen? Because some of these ordinances. Were put in place in fourteen, when they started putting some height requirements in, which might have been. How that got put in because of some of those, some of the, I think.
Has there been pushback? We we obviously have control of the boardwalk. We managed to do that. I'm just.
Right. But but um, as we were talking about when we were developing the waterfront preservation, we really haven't had any new development proposals. That have come before us. Um, somebody else was pointing out like, what's the height currently of Coral Gables? Because it's 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 existed and. Think it is probably even higher than thirty five feet. Uh, you know, so it's, and we all know that if under the current zoning. Unless they came through with the P U D, they could not even, if that was, you know, burnt down, they couldn't rebuild it. You know, it's uh. Uh, so it's. It's kind of a compromise between. Allowing. Something as tall as that, or like we did on Lake, where you've got, you know, four stories, just saying, hey, I don't care who the planning commission is. No one can come before you with a four or five story proposal.
No, I I I know.
Yeah.
I know that. I'm just saying that um, we have a standard today. Around twenty eight feet, I guess. And it's, I don't know how long it's been in existence for, but. Within that period of time, we've not lost the boardwalk. The city has not lost control of the boardwalk. So somehow we've managed to negotiate with builders. Um, and I'm just curious as to how we did that.
But I can't recall any building that's been built along the waterfront. Since that requirement was put into place. And then when we were doing the assessment for the waterfront preservation district, one of the first things that David did for us. Governor recall, we we did an assessment of every property that was along the waterfront. As to whether it was a high risk of being redeveloped or low risk. And there was a number of the factors that we felt were very high risk for being redeveloped. And that was why we really started taking a look at, should we have a waterfront preservation kind of changes? So the setback environment, so. Became aware that the boardwalk was not. Longtime, I thought it was the city. So we found out it's all the property owners. This was where you started bringing it to the attention that.
I think, sorry, I thought you were. I'm I think Mark was kind of getting at this. I think maybe Bobby was. I guess why is our. Our bargaining chip or compromise ability? Why is it based on height? Why can't we just? Start to change the site plan review standards and suck those in more. And if you want those expanded. Then maybe we can talk about preserving waterfront. Why does our, why is our compromise chip around the height? Why can't it be around other aspects of the?
Well, it is. It already is. That's what's in here. It's like, right now it says you can have. You can negotiate the setbacks, you can negotiate the lot coverage. What we currently don't address in any way is if somebody came in and at underneath the P U D was asking for. A building higher than the twenty eight feet.
Yeah.
And it could be any number of stories. Now, you can always rely on the planning commissioners during that to say, hey, it's out of the character of our city. And so therefore I'm not going to approve it. Or you can put something in the ordinance itself that says. It can't, you know, it cannot be up for a P U D application if it exceeds. And this is current height that's in the site plan, which is twenty eight feet or thirty five feet as it's an option two.
And this is me being naive probably, but why, why is it twenty eight feet? Why can't we start to mess with that?
And then we gotta go back and rewrite all of our existing zone zoning ordinances.
But if the big concern is big buildings, tall buildings on the waterfront, isn't that worth it? If that's what.
You know, it's, I can get, I think I've beat this horse many times.
Yeah.
The reviewing all of the commercial zones. Is one of my top players that I want to discuss that are just for twenty twenty five. Primarily because we have inconsistencies. There's really questionable why we have so many zones in the commercial district. We've got these little half zones that were left from Water Street South, Water Street North. And so I think all these things, if we if we are going to go back and at least start with the commercial. We can address these and start to say, hey. We want to make changes even on that, so that a site plan.
Yeah.
It would require.
Uh, yeah, and I think all I'm getting at is just if we can. I mean, we have the ability to, I guess, change things and, and, and. Effectively give ourselves more carrots. So, um, I'm just trying to look at if we can get more creative and. And what we're at now. I know that's gonna require a lot more, but that's what I'm thinking right now. Sorry, I didn't see you.
Yeah, so I, I. I first said the, the option two, but it, through the public conversations we had when we did the boards, and I thought that was really good. Got to meet a lot of people about that. The, the height was really something that was talked about.
Hmm.
I don't have a problem with option one as well. I just think it's a opportunity that. Somebody came and said, I'll give you the boardwalk if you give me the seven feet. I think I probably would. That's why. But I do want to have a limit on it, so the futures don't, don't see a.
Which is why I think the, I, I like option two, because I like the ability. That. It can be discussed to allow. Full third floor. Long as it doesn't exceed thirty-five feet. Um. Because chances are like, I know, I know, you said, that's what they're gonna ask for, but that's probably our greatest. Opportunity of securing. That walkway.
You know, I come from an industry of negotiation. And I. I mean, I'm trying to truly wrap my head around this in terms of. You write down thirty-five feet. That's what it's gonna be. And you have no negotiating ability.
Well, you only can, you only. Would grant them the thirty-five feet if. Like it says in there, they meet those other standards of. So giving you. The boardwalk access lot line to lot line or thirty-three percent of. The open lot.
But apparently we're already doing that at twenty-eight feet.
But we haven't had anybody come before us.
Well, we won't know until we do.
And unless I'm reading it wrong, twenty-eight feet is what we do citywide. For all residents. And this ultimately is a residential building.
That's in the commercial zone. It's water.
On the first floor, but the upper floors would be residential, I'm sorry. Excuse. So for us to say, okay, well, we're gonna have twenty-eight feet across the city except. Except the area where the public seems most concerned.
By what they can see.
And, and use. Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, this is really what it comes, how much are we, what are we putting on the table for the boardwalk? It's really. Seems like you got a pretty big. Paraphrase with these setbacks. Hard to pull me over the. Especially that, that is a great point. That's, that's what we hold. Say it was fast. And we've had people come in front of us with site plan reviews for houses, and it was like, we were arguing whether it was, what's the other thing, uh. From the natural average, natural average grade, what the hell add it? So, I mean. He, he comes up with houses and we have stuck to. So it's getting what, towards the.
Hey, again. And as David pointed out. Those are the two options. Currently doesn't address height at all, and we can leave it. As to where it's not, you know, height is not addressed, and then it's open to. You know, whoever wants to file the P U D and bring it in front of. So there's really three options. One is to do. Nothing to what is in existence.
I trust the future planning people, but I think it would be nice to give them a little bit of a.
I think a line should be twenty-eight feet.
Thanks, I agree.
We're just, we're just discussing this, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, we're kind of discussing it and then. Because we did it, because we did it as a. Because we did it as a public hearing, so. If we deliberate and we come to the conclusion that we want to recommend option one. And. That's. Basically we postpone at this point. We bring it back on December nineteenth. Number nineteen. Include the public hearing with the language that exists in option one. That's kind of what I'm here for.
Yes.
And option one being the twenty-eight feet, not leaving it open.
Where we're not leaving the ability for them to. Negotiate height from what it currently is.
Oh, come on, I think it could make it out today. It will be done.
The gentleman. Even with.
I don't, it's been publicly noticed. I don't, we don't need to postpone until the nineteenth, you know what I'm saying?
Is that?
The reason I said that at start is because I, I was a bit. It's on my part, it's probably because it's it and then that was just a, so. I just want to thank you guys for what you've had in your time. But if you come to a consensus, you definitely don't need to postpone until the nineteenth.
But we could actually have a motion to approve this. For recommendation of city council. As option one.
Unless Trent wants to correct me, yeah?
No, I would, I would agree with you, Luke. If it's noticed as a public hearing, I think it would just be the, the regular process to recommend to council, um. Whether that be an affirmative recommendation or, or, or not, you know, I think that that would be. Normal procedures. I, I think that. I echo what Luke said, that the talk about postponing was because it seemed like this board was. Sort of leaning that way, but if you've, if you've made your decision, I think that it would be. Totally reasonable to make the decision tonight.
And. I hope you have a motion.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Option one.
Wait.
Let me see what David, David, please.
I, I do apologize. I, I wanted to cut. I jump in before a motion was made. Uh, just one typo I wanted to mention, because we've had two months to look at this, uh. Um. So if, if you're going for option one or whatever the motion is, um. There is one typo on page two, under two. A two, which says the reduction of the minimum waterfront setback down to ten feet. That should actually be fifteen feet. Um, the, what we are allowing in the current ordinance allows for the reduction of up to ten feet. So that would be. A waterfront setback down to ten feet. So I, I just, a- as we were seeking to clarify this language, I just, I. That's my fault. There was a typo. Um, it, it, it should say fifteen feet so that it's. Matches the existing allowance.
I think those five feet.
So the item two is reduction of the minimum waterfront setback down to fifteen feet.
Yes, because what, what, the allowance was supposed to give ten feet of flexibility. So a twenty-foot, twenty-five-foot minimum could be dropped up to ten feet. To a minimum of twenty-five feet. And, um, as I was re-organizing this paragraph, I, I just. Interchange that and I apologize. I, I don't want to give, this, this was not intended to give more flexibility. This was intended to stay the same. So. That would be down to fifteen feet.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
So let me try again, Chairman Mans. I will make a motion to adopt option one. Of. To amend title fifteen after week before. To amend section one fifty-four dot zero three eight C two downtown waterfront preservation district. To eliminate first four apartments as permitted in special land uses and to amend section one fifty-four dot one one three to clarify and revise. Plan unit development modifications for the C two downtown waterfront preservation district concerning qualifying. Plus with the provision that. Section two's. Paragraph A subsection two. You change setback, you change from ten feet to fifteen feet. That's probably the motion. Done.
Motion and seconded, I will ask the board for a roll. Not roll call, call a vote, sorry. It is getting late. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Yes. Includes the public hearing and that recommendation will go to. Will be revised and will go to. City Council. For their next workshop on this. Well, that's this week, so.
Soon as possible.
You know.
Oh, yeah.
And then our last item of new business. Bed and breakfast, bed and breakfast accessory structure in the R four city center transition, transitional residential district. Review of the draft code ordinance. Amendment and the public hearing of a proposed. Textable. And once again, we move. On this one. Did we did it? We did it as a public. Hearing?
Makes sense.
Uh, Luke.
Yes.
Would you like to kind of walk through and once again. Remind us, did we already notice this as a public hearing? Because there is some discussion items. That we need to have.
Yeah.
Before we would make a recommendation. So it could also be, end up being discussion. And postpone.
We did, uh, so again, yeah, if you don't feel like you get enough information tonight, you can put postpone. Um, and we could leave the public hearing, uh, open. But yeah, the, the, the. Proposal before you tonight from McKenna, Chris Corey is here from McKenna.
We will go ahead and open the public hearing.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Open a public hearing, then I'll ask Luke to kind of give us a summary, please.
So, uh, Chris Corey is here from McKenna to propose, um, the habitation of accessory structures. Uh, for bed and breakfasts. Essentially, um, it would add a, a couple. Uh, areas to our zoning ordinance, um, to allow for accessory buildings. To rent rooms. Um. Uh, as, as accessory to a bed and breakfast. Um, he's here on behalf of the Wickwood B and B. Uh, and, um. Yeah, I'm sure he can probably address any questions you guys have.
Thank you.
No.
As, as Mr. Thompson said, uh, my name is Chris Corey. I'm with McKenna. Um, met many of you guys when we worked with you guys last year on short-term rentals. Um. We're proud to be here on behalf of Wickwood Inn tonight, uh, over at five-ten Butler Street, right up the street. Uh, with a proposed text amendment. Um, this text amendment is, was submitted. It's been run through Mr. Thompson, Mr. Drusick. Um, and you do have some amendments from staff and your consultants in front of you already. Uh, you can see the. The changes from our version in red. We have no objection to the changes. Um. The meat of the proposed amendment would be a new section. Uh, one fifty-four point oh-two-two R ten. Which would allow. Bed and breakfasts. In. The R four C E R. Zoning district only. By special use permit. To renovate accessory buildings on their properties for guest rooms. Um, the reason this is being requested is to allow, uh, bed and breakfasts to expand their hospitality capacity. Without having to renovate or expand their historic principal structures. Uh, and therefore to potentially alter the quaint and historic and attractive. Charming street frontage, um, that that North Butler Street and other areas of the city have. Um. There would be a number of provisions that would be in the new section ten. Um, in addition to the special use requirement and the restriction to that one zoning district, which as I understand it. Covers Butler Street from Mary Street to Lucy Street. I think that's just about it. Um, additionally. All requirements of section one fifty-five oh-two-two R one through nine, which are the existing requirements for the bed and breakfasts, those would all have to be met. Both for the principal structure and for the proposed accessory structure. A newly constructed accessory guest building would have to meet all the requirements of one fifty-four oh-two-two H, which is your requirements for accessory buildings. You have to meet all your accessory building requirements, which means it could not be built. Like a second principal building. It would have a limited height. Um, and would have different setbacks. Um, the next section, and this was added by Mr. Jerusik, um. Addresses a potential idea that Wickwood Inn has talked about, but has not taken any steps yet to actually implement. Um, they own the property at one twenty Mary, uh, which is another house around the corner from them. Um, what they would like to do is combine that lot with their existing lot and create a multi-building. Complex that would all be operated as a single bed and breakfast. They're not allowed to do that now for several zoning reasons, but the biggest of which is. All bed and breakfast rooms must be in the same building, your current ordinance. That though is not their initial plan. Their initial plan would be just to renovate the existing accessory building in the backyard of their current property. That would be phase one. Phase two would potentially involve the house at one twenty Mary. But this provision would, uh. Acknowledge that potential intention for them or some other. Uh, entity. To convert and incorporate an existing building that had originally been built as a principal building into their lot as an accessory building. And they would be able to do that again through special use permit. Um, if the building in question meets all of your accessory building standards, or if it does not. If it was established lawfully, and I know that's language that you guys struggled with earlier, and we could talk about that language. Um, and meets all the building code and fire code requirements, then you could potentially still approve a special use permit for the guest rooms in that particular building. Um. Following that, we have some clarifications that renovating an existing building to create guest rooms without altering the, the footprint or height of the building. Would not be considered the expansion of a dimensional non-conformity. So if an existing accessory building has a setback that is not conforming. Um, it could still be renovated into guest rooms, provided it was not expanded to make that setback even more non-conforming. Um, and finally. That accessory. Guest buildings, accessory buildings to a bed and breakfast are not accessory dwelling units. They don't meet, they don't have to meet your accessory dwelling unit standards. They don't have to go through that process. They don't have to be certified as accessory dwelling units. They are guest rooms. They're not dwelling units. Separate, a separate thing under the building code and your zoning ordinance. Um, to make sure that that's, that's clear. Um, that would, that would both. Eliminate restrictions under your zoning ordinance, but also create new ones, which is to say this could not be the permanent dwelling of some person. Cannot be used that way on the building code or the zoning ordinance. So kind of a two-way street there. The rest of the ordinance, uh, or excuse me, the rest of the amendments are amendments to other sections of the ordinance. In order to ensure, um, consistency throughout. With the language, um, to ensure things, for instance, that right now, your definition of a bed and breakfast specifically references that is a, a building. Singular. So this would change it to say building and excess and associated accessory buildings, things of that nature. Um, and I can answer any specific questions on the, uh. And that aspect of the amendment. Uh, going forward. So I'm here to participate in the discussion, answer any questions and, um. Give kind of Wickwood Inn's perspective on this.
Before we move to public comment on this application, sir, any questions for the app?
I really thought this was about. The house they bought. Mary Street, that they wanted to incorporate that into like a compound. There is some kind of building. Behind their main building? Is it like behind their parking lot?
I mean, I'm trying to picture. Yes, it's in sort of the northwest corner, not northwest corner all the way, but sort of northwest portion of their lot. The existing home being on Butler, that being the, the current guest building. Uh, so the building is set back well away from Mary Street and then in the backyard, as you would do with Butler. Yes.
It's a separate freestanding building, not a.
That is a separate freestanding, yes.
And what's the square footage of that?
I don't have that in front of me, I'm sorry.
And it's in their current lot space right now?
Current lot, it's on the one twenty Mary lot.
So it is on the five-ten Butler lot. Separately, they are considering if this goes through. Doing a lot combination to bring one twenty Mary into the compound, but first they have a building in the rear that they.
The building we're talking about now is empty?
Uh, I believe it's garage. And some storage and maybe a vehicle in there. They don't let guests park in there.
Gotcha. I can picture the parking lot. I can't picture what's behind it. So, okay.
Yeah, I do have a question because I was misunderstanding. So if the down the road, they were to. Petition to combine the lots. They would technically have a bed and breakfast with two guests?
Yes.
Um, houses. On, what is their combined parcel? What's the limit that they couldn't want a third or fourth guest house?
So there is not currently a specific limit on. Guest houses. However, you do have limitations on number and size of accessory buildings. And those limitations would still apply.
What do you mean number?
Is it limited to one currently?
Yeah, I, I think what he's getting at, what I was concerned with too is, um. Not, not necessarily Wickwood, but let's look at another bed and breakfast, maybe like the, the, the Judson Heath over on Butler. What would stop them from buying the home adjacent property? And then potentially expanding down the block and buying the next home. And now all of a sudden, they have three homes on that block. That are considered guest houses. that are considered guest houses, and they absorb them all into the same footprint, this would, this could pave the way for, right?
This could allow that, you, I, and I'll just admit that, I'm not gonna stand, stand here and say that wouldn't be allowed, that would be allowed under this ordinance as drafted. Each individual expansion would require a separate special use approval from this body. I don't know if that's sufficient control in your opinion, but that's, um, a- and additionally, things like the overall lot coverage would still have to meet the lot coverage requirement. Um, though again, that's not necessarily a control, each individual lot, that lot coverage, buying, they would also be lot coverage. Um, so I, I do think you have, just putting on a generalized planner hat here and not necessarily advocating, I do think you have control over a bed and breakfast buildings, a whole bunch of outbuildings in their existing backyard, because they've got lot coverage requirements, setback requirements, that kind of thing. But that, this does open the door to by special use permit without, without a cap except the size of the block, I suppose, yeah.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Just so everybody's aware, by the way, the, uh, C E R district also includes the section of Mason Street from, um, all the way up to.
It's, it's all lower basin, pretty much from the American Legion all the way to the staircase.
Yep. Just so people know, the C E R is not just.
Doesn't.
It's a small, it's a small point.
That was an oversight on my part, I'm not trying to.
I know you're not.
Pushing past you guys.
Other questions for the applicant? If not at this time, we'll go to public comments. Regarding the application, if you're in the room, would like to make the comment, please come up. Name, address, let me come with three minutes, and if you're online, raise your hand. In the room, we have no comments, online we have none, so we will close the public comment section, which then leads us to commission deliberation.
So, I, this, this is one that, uh, just kind of what I brought up there, I, I think in a vacuum, I'm, I'm fine with this, with what Wickwood's doing, and on one twenty Mary Street, I think that's okay and that fits, but where I get worried is there's multiple, there are bed and breakfasts in this area, I think we have Lucky Stone, we have the Judson Heath, I know Felicia Fairchild's place was a bed and breakfast, and so that could become one. So my concern would be, especially when you have short-term rentals all up and down Butler, is now we have these bed and breakfasts, and they start to buy adjacent properties, and they start to move down the line, and I know that R four is this transitional area, but it still is meant to create a buffer zone, it's still, the intentions are to promote residential land uses, and there's a reason hotels aren't permitted, and I could see this spiraling into that, I, I don't think it would happen, I don't think any of the current owners have any aspirations to do that, but it's, it's looking out thirty years, this is almost the, the perfect way for, all of a sudden, now you have a whole block in between Mary and Hoffman, that could technically all be the Judson Heath under this.
Correct, because, and I agree, when I was looking at it, you've got, if you, again, they get, there's a bunch of hoops they have to jump through, because first they'd have to apply for consolidation, but doing a consolidation of two lots is a lot easier than doing a split of a lot. And so the idea that they could consolidate, then by the next property consolidate, to say this is all one ownership, and I could have unlimited number of guest houses, you know, long as I need the lot coverage on that, but depending upon the parcels, that could mean that you've got five or six different guest accessory buildings that are now guest rooms.
And, and so I guess I, that gets to it, maybe it was more appropriate for you, is there any way that we can, I guess in a sense, give, um, Wickwood what they want here without amending the ordinance?
Um, our research into that or our analysis of that was that the only other alternative would be variances, plural. Um, uh, which would be a totally different body that I would have to stand up in front of to make a totally different case. Um, I would suggest that if you're kind of comfortable with the way what Wickwood is describing, but you don't want this to proliferate, that an additional provision limiting the number of buildings with guest rooms to two accessory or three total per lot, or something like that, that puts a cap on it. Uh, that, that would address that concern head-on.
Yeah. But then I think that kind of cuts back to, I know these aren't technically going to be considered accessory dwelling units, but if we're going back to building code there, then I don't want to cap the number of what people can do within their existing space either.
Well, in residential, they can only have one accessory building.
In our.
Well, I meant like another residential district, you have your primary house, and then you could have one. So having a limit on some kind of accessory guest buildings, I don't think would be unreasonable. I guess I would, kind of like we were saying before, I think putting some type of guardrail in place instead of just leaving it open is probably beneficial, I don't know exactly, I don't know if you've got an idea, or if, you know, Mr., if David does, or Luke, as to where we would insert a limit in the ordinance.
Um, my suggestion would be to add it as a section, a new section three. So it'd be, oh, sorry, section C, so ten C. So it would say, the zoning district you have to be in, that you would need special use permit, and then the third one down would say, you can't do this more than twice for a, a single lot.
I, I've got a couple of problems, one, um, on the one hand, you said that it, it's gotta comply with, um, the accessory buildings and structures provision of our, our general provisions, that's one fifty-four point zero twenty, twenty-two H. And then you say, well, unless it was established lawfully at the time, we've already gone through that, and I look at section H, and I I think it's a bit, what you're asking, no offense, is a bastardization of what an accessory building is. Accessory building is not another guest house or a freestanding house that you're gonna put more guests in. That's not an accessory building um, as I believe contemplated by our ordinance, an accessory building is contemplated by our bill ordinance. It's like, you've got a big house, you've got a house, and then you've got something else, maybe put your lawnmower in. Or, or you build a two-story and let people stay above it. Um, I, I think you're really stretching what accessory building and structures means, as I think our ordinance contemplates it. Um, I'm not against Wickwood developing their property, um, I, when they bought that house, I thought, well, duh, you know, they didn't buy it. They bought it for one reason, um, I get it, but, um, I, I, my thought is, rather than put a, you know, making us change all of this, go to the Z V A. Um, that's kind of my thought. Because, and additionally, the good point you raised, which is the one I was thinking about, the proliferation of bed and breakfast complexes, um, in our town. Um, I, you know, and I'm not sure that's bad, but I'm not sure it's good, I'm not sure it's where we want this town to go, so.
No. Those are my thoughts. It is the ballot thoughts, and one thing about allowing it, you know, for whether it's one accessory guest house or two, I do recall like when we were doing the short-term rental, we were talking about how could we increase the number of hotel rooms that would be available to offset the reduction in short-term rentals? And one of them was like, well, we could allow people to use their ADUs in the residential area, and then potentially have new hotel rooms built, whether it's out on Blue Star, which is not the city of Sabatuck, or someplace else. So this, in my mind, I see the advantage if I don't allow it to grow too much, because it's saying, hey, we're restricting rentals in our residential R one neighborhoods, but we're gonna give some flexibility, so some of the bed and breakfast owners can at least accommodate a few more guests within the city of Sabatuck, that's how I kind of saw it, but I do agree that I don't want it to become compounds where the entire block could all be like one property owner with multiple. So I think, you know, and for me anyway, if it was going forward, I would like to see some limit as to the number of accessory guests units that could be on any owned parcel.
Well, and I would think that, um, just bringing the market into this, I mean, what is the demand, is there more? Uh, what was the occupancy rate last year, this past year? Um, and in terms of balance, um, I I mean, I, um, and I understand that, um, Wickwood, that I love, uh, but the Wickwood, um, like any other business, um, now, has their own business and competes and believes that they can attract more than others, but on balance, when we're talking about the city, and our responsibility is the city.
Right.
Um, um, basically, um, I, I think Austin's point, the point that he made, that's the one that just really concerns me, about overbuilding uh, supply.
Now, the one thing that I was, I believe, is that if it's an accessory guest building, I was also under the impression that they would potentially have them more like a little apartment, where they could potentially have a guest room, a little kitchen, and a bathroom, so they can somewhat compete with the short-term rental business, because many people who come into town want the complete apartment. That's what I thought they were gonna try to get to with the guest building, and again, I can kind of see the idea of allowing one or two, but not multiple to where you keep combining the lots.
I'm, I'm getting, I'm, how is it different than an A D U, why not just stick with it as their A D U and have the one extra available, and they can convert that particular building into a qualifying A D U and like any of the Airbnbs?
You currently only allow one A D U.
That's correct.
In this, like this plan, if allowed to go forward one way or another, would convert it, it would be two to five or six additional guest rooms.
Okay.
I would also point out that your A D, an A D U allows someone to live there as a resident and has a different building code requirement. Uh, to the point of whether these would have kitchens or not, I know Wickwood hasn't necessarily decided, some might, some might not. Uh, you are required in a bed and breakfast to provide breakfast. Uh, i- if you look at a house like one twenty Mary, that becomes difficult because it's simply smaller um, space to have a communal breakfast area and a kitchen that can serve that. Um, the, the, the idea would be that that could be served in the existing five ten Butler house where they already have those facilities. Um, uh, which is the impediment to them turning one twenty Mary into its own bed and breakfast.
Is there any but on how many guest rooms they can put in these accessory buildings?
Um, so you have some building code limits, and obviously your own zoning limits. Um.
But like, if, if they wanted to convert one twenty Mary, how many guest rooms could be?
My, my understanding based on the architects on the team is three to five.
Sixteen hundred. And they would, they would end up, then they'd be guest rooms of Wickwood bed and breakfast. And they would have their breakfast served at their main house.
Yeah, they'd walk around the corner to the main house or across the parking lot.
But I still have an issue with allowing too many of them for a person.
I, can I?
Some kind of, and I don't even know if the parcel is right. You know, because it's like, why not, then they can just be more parcel, right?
But I think it conceptual.
Whatever the statutory cap per bed and breakfast to the number of accessory buildings, you can probably meet the objective.
Well, I, I do agree, I think it's, I think I don't have a problem with this all conceptually, as long as we can put a limit on the number of, you know, of the.
You could have that, you could have it, the, how many people have per bed and breakfast license?
Well, yeah, or how many, I guess even lots divide you could do under it, because I mean, if someone came in and said, I'm gonna open up six different, uh, bed and breakfasts on Butler, that wouldn't be a problem, but I think it's just, I think what we're all worried about is just a gigantic lot being created, and you take away three different parcels, and now all of a sudden that can only be run to the day back of hotel.
Because in my mind, I'm thinking, old pocket, if I had the original building that I called bed and breakfast, and then I opened up all these accessory buildings, but I'm serving breakfast in the main building, that'd be allowed to be a bed and breakfast versus a inn or a hotel.
If I could, uh, real quick, and my concern is that the proposed language doesn't quite accomplish, um, what they maybe were trying to do, my main concern would be, uh, that changing the use of a structure from a, a principal dwelling to an accessory, uh, building, eh, eh, you're gonna have things come into play like accessory buildings shall not occupy any portion of the required setback. Uh, and although the principal structure did occupy that portion of the setback, you've now changed the use, so now there's a new accessory structure that is occupying the setback, that kind of, that kind of non-conformity would stop me from being able to combine the lot in the first place. Um, so obviously, this is, this is gonna spread across quite a lot of our zoning ordinance, so I I would guess that this needs quite a lot more discussion.
And to your very point, back to what exempts all that out is the phrase was established lawfully, so.
It, it doesn't quite exempt it out because, um, I can't, I can't just combine, uh, so I mean, to some degree, you're right, but we're, we're changing, we're changing the use. So now what was established lawfully as a primary principal dwelling has now become something else.
Wasn't established lawfully.
Exactly, yeah, and that, that's just my concern, I just, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go through this process, have this be approved, and then when it comes time to combine the lots, realize that we still can't quite do that, and then we have to restart all over again, and Dave, I, I see raring to go.
The purpose of that paragraph E, and I just want to clarify again, the, the memo states that all the red language in the ordinance is, is, is those are edits that I made to, to Chris's work. Um, in my understanding, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, I, I thought the intent was to include one twenty as part of the overall facility, and I just want to make sure, I, I thought I heard you say something that, that, that's a longer term plan, but uh, e- earlier in this year, I think before your involvement, w- we were involved in a couple of conversations wi- with Wickwood, and their intent was to pull that in, and so we, we did have conversations about amending the ordinance to allow it to be considered as, as one, you know, greater facility, so i- if if the intent is just to pull in the existing accessory buildings on that Wickwood property, uh, E could be deleted, but if the intent is to include one twenty Mary as part of the entire site, we would need something like E. And, and the purpose of E to, to Luke's point is that, uh, E would allow for special land use approval of, of the greater facility, and then that would allow for the, the compliant combination of the lot, so if they were approved a- as a um, additional associated guest building, um, that would be approved through the special land use process, and after that, the, the property could be combined in a compliant manner, um, by the assessor and zoning administrator. So, uh, and I think E was trying to envision those unanticipated, non-conforming scenarios for, for when we're really converting existing principles into these new accessory guest buildings. And so that was the intent of E is, is if we are going to pull, if the intent is to pull in one twenty Mary, that that would allow for that to happen without being hung up on a number of unknown non-conformities with section one fifty-four oh two two H.
Uh, so just to clarify, the, it is the intent to pull one twenty Mary into the complex, quote unquote. Um, there's just an understanding with Wickwood that there, even with this, would be a few more hurdles to jump over, um, with regard to things like combining a parcel and that kind of thing. Um, whereas with existing accessory buildings on their property, they could come for a special use permit as soon as the, um, as soon as the amendment becomes effective. Um, I, I, I do, I don't have, unfortunately, I'm sorry, in front of me, the accessory building standards, and I honestly don't remember what it is that you guys do for accessory buildings in sort of a street side yard like one twenty Mary would be in relative to five ten Butler, if they were on the same lot. Whether that's, because thinking, just thinking it through, um, from a setback perspective, your accessory building setbacks are smaller than your principal building setbacks, so from the western lot line, right, that setback should be okay, because actually the apartment gets smaller, not bigger, and the current northern and eastern lot lines of the one twenty Mary parcel will disappear, so they're not, all. Problem is actually Mary Street, how far it is from Mary Street relative to five ten Butler, and if they're. And if there is an issue there, we may have to add something to the amendment that would address that, or at least allow the planning commission to waive that. At your discretion or something like that for a special.
So it looks like what was the front, assuming that these lots are combined. What was the front setback would become the side setback. Um, and the side setback would be seven feet. Uh, so, I mean. They may, uh, to your point, they may meet that already. Yeah, I see that. Okay.
And I, you know, I think that's something where. We would, I would like to confirm that or make sure there's some sort of availability. And perhaps it is better as a planning commission discretion option as part of the special use permit. Rather than sort of an automatic, non-conforming right built lawfully type of thing. I, I think, you know, Wickwood Inn would be comfortable with that. Especially if the planning commission is not as comfortable with the was established lawfully when you guys go back to eighteen sixty-eight and four and we don't know. That's, that's very understandable. But that aspect, yes, we would uh, not want to have this all go through and then that aspect not have been addressed and have become a problem.
Absolutely.
My point with that was, as established. Lawfully, my point was that it. I believe different than what you were saying, doesn't hamstring you. Well, it does. It, 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 it provides a petitioner with a wide open door saying, oh, this is the way it was built. Uh, we, we get a, a. Go pass, go buck two hundred dollars for free. Fine, interesting that under, so I, I would have a real bond with what was established lawfully included because. Section H, accessory buildings and structures, all new accessory buildings and structures shall conform with all of the following requirements. So you take something that wasn't an accessory, it's a freestanding house. When it becomes an accessory building, it must comply with. Thus, we allow them a go, go pass, go whatever, get out of jail free card as established by law.
But I think.
It's a new accessory building. It may not be a new building, it's a new accessory.
But I think that that is what was contemplated under section E. My right, Dave? I mean, that, so the conversion incorporating, yeah.
Yeah. So E, E is a new accessory guest building, I'm sorry, D is a new constructed accessory guest building, whereas E is the conversion. Of a principal building to an accessory guest building. And so, and that does anticipate that, that certain non-conformities may result. But they would be allowable through the special land use process. But also, uh, 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 this is, this is going to be a, a corner lot property, so they're subject to two front setbacks of twenty feet. The, the, the building's not conforming with the front setback one way or the other. The, the setback non-compliance has nothing to do with, with the. With the use conversion, um, is, is unless. I mean, and even if it did, this paragraph E would, would address that by saying that. If it doesn't comply to one more requirements for accessory buildings, the planning commission can still approve it. So. This section E was intended to just clear all those issues with conversion of buildings. Now, now. With all that said, y- you have a, a, a good. This is an important conversation, a- as Austin mentioned in his email and earlier before. And as others that, you know, do you want to allow the, these, you know, these, these are bed and breakfasts on steroids. This is, this is a little bit different, but in any zoning district, I think this is the most appropriate residential zoning district to allow this. Uh, but it's still your decision to determine whether or not it's important, uh, well, it's, it's appropriate uh, for this location.
Would it be more acceptable instead of the established lawfully language to say something like? No non-conforming setback shall be reduced or shall be made more non-conforming. By virtue of. So for instance, the, the one twenty Mary front setback or it's setback from Mary Street. Would not meet, does not meet the setback now, would not meet the setback. But. It is not being made worse, building is staying where it is. They would prohibit it from expanding the building forward and making it any worse, but they would not be prohibited from moving forward with the overall process. And instead of saying establish lawfully, we say very specifically. That non-conformity. So long as it's not getting worse, we can still approve it.
Uh, I, I, I.
There's a lot of provisions besides setbacks in, in subsection H. I mean, there's, there's. Size, lot size, uh. You know, I mean, there's seven sub-paragraphs to section H, for example. Um, and, and so I'd have to think about that. I like that idea better, but um. For me to agree to it on the fly is a little.
Do we want to just postpone a whole period and try to get? November nineteenth meeting? That kind of cleans up and addresses. To me, plus it's almost nine.
Well, and, and even if we, even if we do what you're suggesting, it doesn't address the core issue of allowing. Other properties within the C E R district to do exactly what they're asking president.
Correct. So I think.
That doesn't, we, we can dance around wording and I'm not saying we are, but we are. We can dance around wording. And it's not going to address if we as a city, our core issue is no, we don't want. Compounds. Of bed and breakfast in our, in our downtown area.
And I think that's.
I don't know.
And that's one of the things I was gonna say, if we're gonna postpone, let's give the guidance as to what we would like to change. So do we want to put in? A limit on the number of guest accessories, you know? That could be, it would attach to any one bed and breakfast. I guess since that, yes, we'd like to see that language in here. Is it? One accessory, two? You know, per bed and breakfast or?
Well, you know what?
You know, and it's, uh.
But they would want more, more than two, is it, right?
Wickwood, Wickwood would be, as far as I'm understand, Wickwood would be happy with a limit of two because they want two. So. If that was the limit, I don't think, I, 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 I don't think my client would give you pushback on that.
Specifically, we're talking about habitable accessory structures. Not like sheds. Things. Because there's already two.
Well, they're converting a garage, so.
But the, so the one twenty Mary has a principal structure and a, a, a smaller accessory structure on it. Yeah.
I don't walk that.
But what I'm saying is that they're talking specifically habitable accessory.
No, no one at Wickwood has talked to us about renovating that garage on one twenty Mary and guest.
No, I was talking about the one behind the parking lot. You said, I asked what that building on, on the main Wickwood property is used for now, and you said it's for storage and.
Yeah, it, it's basically a garage, it's basically a store, it's.
Currently, between the two properties, we have the. Bed and breakfast. We have an accessory building that's used for storage currently. We've got one twenty Mary, which is. House originally, and then a garage behind that. So you do have, you know. So there is four structures. If it, if it was.
That, that's why I don't think, I don't think framing this as how many structures is the right way to do this because. All their proposed amendments, it's all about an accessory building on the same lot. And I think what we're all worried about is, 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 yeah, taking over other lots. I think it's more of how many times can you do that as opposed to how many accessory buildings? You think it's both? Okay. I'm more cons- I'm more concerned with the lots.
If I had, if we limited any bed, bed and breakfast to. Two. That's reguest buildings and there really would be no reason for them to buy a third lot. To try to combine it because they couldn't combine it with their business because they've already got the other two. So you're kind of accomplishing. Right. Or they could, I mean, again, they could buy the, the other one and. Make it a bed. Breakfast, so that's more of a standard.
But I think if Wickwood had come in and said, we only want one. But then about one, the only reason we're talking about two instead of where Wickwood came and said they want three. He's saying, well, gosh, three's okay.
Uh, I think we're trying to. What happens? So I'm looking at it because if the idea is to allow the bed and breakfasts to exist somehow. Provided the level of service. Combinate the chores of the city. But. But I don't want to see a perforation of. Sort of guest houses that are surrounded by one. Like threatens. But you do have to somehow figure out what is going to be the limit that you're allowing anyone.
And just other off topic or a little bit different, the, the motor courts, so old bike, uh, bird sanctuary, they have multiple. They have multiple structures already, they're just not registered as bed and breakfast.
Are they, are they a hotel under here or are they, is that not the city?
I think they're motor court officially.
That's the one I.
I'm not familiar with the problem.
But, but.
There's five.
And I think, and because of where this is located. That's kind of what we didn't want to have is have like one bed and breakfast with that maybe. Guest house is surrounded, totally changes. I mean, it's a transitional neighborhood. But there is some extent as to. Is it really a commercial establishment or is it a transitional?
And is it, is motor court acceptable use in, in this district?
Uh, I know hotel is not, which is, we wouldn't be here if hotel was allowable. They would be converting to a hotel with whatever that required and then you guys.
Now, it's just bed and breakfast, short-term rentals and all occupational, essential public.
So Lake Street allows motor.
And a big reason for that is just.
Yeah, okay, yeah, the motor court has some parking rules that went with that designation.
Because if we all of a sudden. Whether it's Wickwood or any other bed and breakfast. You add, it's nice that you're adding additional. Hellworks, but. You also have to try to figure out that. We're going to be pardoning.
But we're not asking for any parking reduction. The parking standard would apply and you would be able to review that as part of the specials.
Yeah, I. I, I'd like to also see if there's just. Other, I'd also like to see if there's other ways to. Accomplish this ask without this amendment too. And I know you kind of said that, but I, I probably wanted to dig more into that because I think especially this location, it's not very concerning with me because it's, it's, it's bordered right by Water Street there. And I feel like this is just a very tight corner. Are for that, where I'm worried about different places and what. So.
Um, we've actually conducted an analysis which we could. Provide to the planning commission, if you do postpone. On what the alternatives would be. Uh, it was the decision of our client with our recommendation that this was the. Simplest path forward. Because of the bar that has to be met to get variances. And again, I, I would have to go back and look at what we looked at and we could provide it to you. But I believe it was variances plural. Um, and in order to get those, we would have to demonstrate that Wickwood Inn is unique. Um, whereas this is simply saying that this district of the city is appropriate for this type of landings. Um, and we have provided some analysis in, um. Our accompanying documentation about the remaster plan. Um, which does specifically designate this area as appropriate for bed and breakfasts. And again, I'll say what I said at the beginning, which is that. Wickwood Inn and self-planner. Uh, and I think all of us value that Butler Street corridor, what it looks like in the front. And for. I don't, not threatening this, but for them to say, all right, what are our minimum setbacks? We're going to put modern additions on all sides, wherever we can meet our setbacks, we're filling the guest rooms. That would be allowable because they are actually permitted use by right right now, not a special. Bed and breakfast in this district permitted use by right. And again, I'm not threatening that, I, they don't want to do that. But from a planning perspective, allowing them alternatives. For expansion that do not alter the historic character of a frontage. My mind is something that would is. Um, and we said this, not just consistent with your master plan, but actively helps you implement. That's my case in that regard.
And I think my feeling is most of us are open to the concept. It's just a matter of trying to get it. But figuring out what the best approach is without just changing an ordinance.
I think speaking.
accommodate one applicant that we're anticipating, but it's more.
Speaking to what Chris said, I, I don't. I, I'm sure this is the simplest. I also would bet that it's the most likely. Way to get this done. It would be. Extremely burdensome, um, to, to go for the variance room. So realistically, this. I think would be the appropriate process. If you're looking at two ways and you think that, you know, this way. Is the most likely to actually achieve the outcome you desire. It's not only the most simple. I mean, it's, yeah, I, I just wanted to throw that out there.
I think it's the, it's upon us to make certain. While it's saying that we're looking at it not only for this situation, but. What else could happen within that zone? And. You know, because once it's in there, then the next person who owns that bed and breakfast. Has that ability to ask for the same thing. I can't go back, there's got to be some, in my mind, some limit as to how many. Units any one bed and breakfast license is allowed to have.
All right, I, I feel it should be the one. I feel it should be similar to A D U. Why have it more than one, the A D U, uh, one building?
I, I agree. I think that would probably also, I don't know, I. No offense to the Wick, I, I almost feel like the, the garage in the back is kind of like a red herring when it's, it's all about the, the Mary Street purchase. That's just kind of what it feels like. I don't know, it feels like we're, we're massaging in with this little one, but it's all about actually this, this big one that we want to take in.
I've, I'm, I, I honestly can't speak for them on a business perspective. It is possible that if you were to, uh, to approve this with a limit of one accessory building, that they, that one. That's, I, I could see that. I, I, but I can't, I haven't had that conversation with them.
Possibly.
It's, it keeps the proliferation from happening, I feel.
And the other two are just storage or garages. Yeah, I'm open to the concept of two, you know, on a, a bind lot. It's up to, it was, we would all kind of agree to.
Yeah, I won't be here in the summer, but. One is fine with me. Who would want or do? I have a secret, you know, between the number of rooms in one versus the others so that it doesn't.
I think it. Right, see, but. Obviously, it's got to be. Your total lot coverage still has to be, so like, yeah, just. Starting to allow three.
Yeah, but I, but looking at like the, the satellite of this, I mean, the Mary Street has a, a garage kind of in the backyard. And I mean, if, if we're talking about, we want to give more options for. Places to stay, then I kind of feel. Weird restricting them if it's like, if this whole kind of compound is going to be part of Wickwood, why not let them? Build it out a little bit more with. An additional room or, how do you see it? I, I don't know, it's. That's, that's why I'm a. Kind of with an ordinance and then a little like iffy, just because I, I can't really get set on a, a firm number because I feel like they should maybe be able to get like three. If they combine these two parcels, I don't see why we should restrict them there because it's gonna, it's meeting the intent of. Giving it as we put this, uh, cap on short-term rentals, it gives more lodging options, so. Talking in circles probably at nine thirty-eight, sorry.
I mean, we can leave it as. Opened and then you and Dave. Put a couple of, because right now I'm just trying to see like where that op, where the option would come in. And we could actually have an option for our next meeting that says. One unit. Two units, three units, whatever. We have times, it's kind of some time to think.
Like, if you look at the zoning map also, I just real quick for what it's worth. District we're talking about has a maximum of four lots. Lot, some of them have three. So if you say two accessory buildings and somebody, they basically could buy a whole block. Turn it into a common. And again, I don't know that's bad. I don't know if it's good. It's just. I, I haven't thought about whether I want bed and breakfast compounds on the map. Pros and cons in terms of. That X. I mean. There are people who love living on Butler Street. I wouldn't want to live on Butler Street, but people love living on Butler Street. Where do we, yeah, let's, like you're saying, let's think ten, or years, ten, twenty years in advance. What, you know, that's what we're, that's what we're trying to decide in part is like, okay, what? What are the unintended consequences? What are the unintended consequences? What are the potential consequences? Um, and, and trust me, people will take advantage of anything we give them. Whether it be four stories on Water Street or, you know, people are at the advantage.
Do we? Want to have a motion to postpone?
So moved.
We had to give a date then, right?
Um, I, I think that's what friends said, yes, I, we, it is, does the nineteenth work for you, Chris?
I think so. I'll make it work.
Sorry for making you hang out for three hours. So.
Yeah, whatever. David, you guys.
Like it's a little hard on December nineteen, but that's all right, that's my job.
Yeah.
Kind of rework and take some of these. Out and then put in some options for the number of units, or we just want to go with one?
I, I'm, I'm, well, I hear some options, I think about it a little bit.
I know, I need to think about it.
That particular property and it's probably can absorb that type, but it's.
But then we have to kind of think about, well, what about the other bed and breakfasts that are in there? And. What would it look like if they have? At least on this one, they're talking about a merging. Properties, but if, if all of a sudden you said one bed and breakfast can have two or three accessory buildings, I'm like, well. Could they all be on one parcel if the parcel was large enough to accommodate it, and then what would that look like? So that's where I gotta kind of get my head around it, spin it a little bit more, I'm looking, I gotta look at every property in there. Kind of really think about what is the potential risk before I look forward.
I can say, I second, yeah.
Then for the. Who post called to December nineteenth, that would be. I think a. Paul. So we did previously, yeah.
Right, what did I just second then?
Postpone to the next.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah. I'm sitting there trying to remember, do we just do I, or do we actually have like, no, that's right, we gotta do a roll call.
I think it's safe, I think it's safe.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. They say.
Yes.
Figure it out.
Yes.
Yes. All right, so that concludes the deliberation and the actual was to postpone, which concludes the. New business for tonight's meeting communication, we already expressed that we had the one communication regards to the one public hearing, I'm not aware of other. Communications that came through.
Go ahead.
The report of officers, um. The only thing I would ask Luke, because I know you do your. Activity report for the council workshops and theirs, if you could put it in our pack, I think all of us like to be able to kind of look through that each meeting and see if there's anything that catches our eye, it's just.
I actually first time now, uh, I'm just looking, I realize that I just didn't.
Yes.
Yeah, that, that's fully my intent.
Perfect, yeah, I saw a list here, so I kind of thought that.
Like both.
Very good, which then moves us to the last public comment, which can be on anything. But. So at this point, we have no one in the room, we have one person online, so I will move to Councilman Peterson, if you would like to unmute. We would welcome your public comment.
Thank you, Chairman Mann, and thank you all for your careful deliberation in response to, uh, Commission Member. Can you start over? We can barely hear. Thank you, uh, Chairman Mann and, and Councilor, Commission Members, and you did great on the deliberations on the waterfront and the boardwalk. In regards to Council or Commission Member God's request, was there ever a negotiation done? It was done twice. Uh, the first time was when the Bentley bed and breakfast sold, and the owners then, uh, got the zoning change to single-family dwelling. And the negotiation between the city and the owners and the boardwalk was, they kept the boardwalk open and then they got the street in. The second time was with the Butler, and I believe Chairman Mann's was there at that time, and I remember Chairman Dan Fox got it into. The original agreement that the boardwalk would be have, have an eastment for the city. Thank you, uh, appreciate all your work. Good night.
Thank you. Yeah, I think she was just pointing out that when they did significantly home on Water Street. There was a negotiation on that, because it wasn't allowed, but they built it.
Judicial memory is good.
Exactly, very good. So seeing no other public comments, we'll close out public comments, we'll move to commissioner comments, start over. Anything for.
Nothing in it.
Mark?
Um, under our bylaws, for good reason. Uh, we may continue or postpone a hearing in any case on an affirmative vote of a majority of the members present, so you calling a roll call for that was. Right within our bylaw.
Thank you. Emily will miss you on the Sunday.
No, maybe not.
No, well.
No comment.
No comment.
My only comment is to follow up on what Mark said earlier, we really appreciate having the, um, the ordinances.
Uh, so American Legal Publishing. That ready to go.
And it's probably not bad, because we do, I was doing this whole book. If we're going to be talking about amendments to an ordinance, just to put the whole ordinance as it is currently approved, whether it's on the website or not. In the packet, so that we can actually refer to, if there's a section being referred to, I don't want to. It would be nice to be able to, instead of having to look up one fifty-four. Or the absolute results, yeah.
Oh, yeah, happy, happy to be here, thank you, uh, everyone, and I look forward to learning from you all, please, I'm learning, so put me in my place if I, uh. If I'm a little bit too starry eyed with things, I, uh, I can take it, and it's a learning process, so. Just give it to me straight, all right, but thank you.
Well, we once again want to welcome you, and I will tell you that. For a new member, you came prepared and made a lot of very good comments, so I can tell already it's gonna be a nice addition. To the planning commission, and so thank you for applying and for being willing to accept it. We were, as most of you guys have heard, unanimous with, uh, Mayor Anderson, myself and Mr. Thompson. Uh, again, we are saddened that Ann, you know, had to resign, so there will be. And Luke, I was going to ask you this, I saw there was an email that went out today of all the positions that are open on different boards. But it didn't have planning commission, but it did have, like, there's four different ones, and it said when the openings would occur, like some were January, and then it said if you want to apply for any of these. We might as well, you know, because our first thought was we had three really good candidates that interviewed for the open position. And that was all the applicants that had time. Uh, but we did, I think, I've been talking with Mayor Anderson, we felt we might as well go ahead and post it. And then if we get new applicants, we'll interview them, if not, we still had the two that we already had interviewed, and we would consider between those. Uh, and of course, I've, Mayor Anderson's decision as to what she wants to recommend. But, and then, as I mentioned earlier, I know Mark won't be here, uh, we would like to have, you know, nomination for, you know, Vice Chair. Uh, moving forward, because Ann was Vice Chair, so that will be on the December nineteenth agenda.
I think you did say this, but it's important to, I believe, for example, some people are often about. Goodness and transparency, especially with board appointments, and so I think. Right, if there's the only two we do, then that's what you decide.
Exactly.
But I think it absolutely needs to be newly posted.
I think it does deeply.
Yeah, that is a requirement, uh, yeah.
It did, it came out, but it didn't, but it didn't, let's plan. Because it just happened and the email was already prepared.
Got it, cool, okay, it has to be great.
Do we have a concern forum?
I was going to ask if anyone else.
Oh, yeah, so. I will be here. I will not be here for January, that's why I need to make sure we have a vice chair.
That would need. Everybody.
Right.
December nineteenth?
Believe everybody's, that other calendar, okay, we should be here. Great, Thursday. Well, that's it for the commissioner comments, so now we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
All those in favor.
Hi.
Um, Austin.